I now call to order the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of Board of Trustees. Time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan. Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Uh, I do have one, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna see if we, if the board would be amenable to moving the letter of support for safe routes to, uh, to, sorry, for the safe routes to parks grant application up to the front of the agenda. Um, I know we've got a pretty loaded agenda tonight, so I just wanted to be sure that we got those folks taken care of and, uh, and that, so.
All in favor?
Right.
Hi.
Perfect. Uh, so yeah, we'll move that to the first spot on the action items. Any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No. Perfect. All right. Next, we will proceed to public comment. Uh, members of the public wishing to provide comment on non-agenda items. Uh, please sign in on the sheet behind the podium and then state your name in the microphone for the record. The speaker will be given three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Uh, Jeff Schofield, seven three three five Kit Fox Drive. It's been about a year since I last raised these issues with you. Um, and I haven't seen any improvement. Um, one, we still need speed bumps installed on Kit Fox between Reagan Court and Sage Meadows to slow traffic down to the posted twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. This is a continued safety hazard. Um, boardwalk, um, in Fort Collins, south of Sams is a good example to reference for you guys for this kind of a problem. The second thing is water remains unaffordable in Wellington. Um, I don't think that's a surprise to any of you. I, I think you've heard a lot about this. Um, rates have quadrupled in less than two years. Um, the town required the viewpoint developer to deed the water well to the town, but this has not been required of the other neighborhoods. So all of our irrigation water is directly from the town if we irrigate at all. So we're faced with again deciding what trees and grass landscape to also stop watering in the future. We spent twenty-three years nurturing trees and landscape. Um, and it's, we think it's unreasonable for the town to expect residents to water the town's easement and property when we can no longer afford to water our own property. The biggest issue is the cost of water, and my understanding is you still plan to increase rates by at least five percent every year going forward per your plan. The cost of water in Wellington is two X or greater that of other providers. The water rates per thousand gallon in the upper tier are four to five times that of other comparable providers. These policies and the unaffordability are adversely affecting our residents, our town, our property values, and reducing the greenness of our community. I implore you to please address the excessive rates and costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No more further public comment. Uh, next, we will move on to a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of, uh, Wellington, Colorado celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas Saturday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, is recognized nationally as Small Business Saturday. And whereas according to United States Small Business Administration, there are nearly thirty-two million. Stop that right there. Uh, thirty-two million small businesses in the United States, of which more than six hundred and ninety thousand of those are small businesses in Colorado. And whereas small businesses employ nearly forty-seven percent of the employees in the private sector in our country and contribute positively to their local communities by providing a workforce pipeline, generating tax revenue, and adding to the character and vitality of our business districts. And whereas, along with advocacy groups and public and private organizations across the country, which have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, today Wellington celebrates our local small businesses and the significant contributions and impacts that they make in our community. And whereas this year, small businesses need our support now more than ever as they navigate, retool, and pivot from the effects of the coronavirus pandemic. Now, therefore, I, Kaler Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, as Small Business Saturday in the Town of Wellington and urge the residents of our community to celebrate and support small businesses and merchants on this day and throughout the year. All right. Next is a, a doozy of a proclamation. All right. This one's gonna be Love Your Lawyer Day. And we do love Dan. Uh, whereas Love Your Lawyer Day is observed nationally in November to celebrate the dedication of attorneys across the United States in providing affirmative contributions to the public good and the administration of justice. And whereas Love Your Lawyer Day emphasizes that a, a central motivation of lawyers is to serve others and better their communities. And whereas Love Your Lawyer Day encourages communities to engage with and take pride in the legal professionals that protect the public interest. And now, therefore, I, Kaler Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Love Your Lawyer Day in the Town of Wellington and further extend appreciation to the Town Attorney, Mr. Dan Sapienza, and his colleagues at March Olive and Sapienza LLC, and to the Municipal Judge, Ms. Teresa Ablaw. Ablaw. Uh, I urge our citizens to celebrate the exceptional service and accomplishments of the many legal professionals in our community. All right. On to the presentations. Next, we'll have a presentation on the twenty twenty-four budget. Mr. Don Rose, the Finance Director and Town Treasurer, Mr. Rhodes.
Evening, Mayor, Board. Happy to be with you again here this evening. And we're gonna pick a screen here. Sure. My name's Don Rhodes. I'm the Town Treasurer and Intrum Finance Director for the town. And we're here once again to talk about the twenty twenty-four budget. A brief agenda here. We're gonna look at the budget calendar really quick and then an overview of part four. For those that haven't been following along this journey so far, we've actually, uh, had quite a few budget meetings so far. And this is, this is part four. It's an update on what we looked at last month. Um, so we gotta look at major budget changes. We'll do a brief, uh, overview of the various town funds. Um, and I'll, I'll try to be more brief and concise than the hour and fifteen minutes or so of the last presentations. Oh, we wanna, again, very good. Thank you. Okay. And, and then at the, uh, very end, um, your H R Director, Ms. Anderson's gonna come up and talk a little bit about employee compensation and the merit and cola program here in the city. So let's get started. Um, as I, uh, as I mentioned, just for a brief overview for those here in the audience and who may be, uh, uh, listening online, it's been a, a long march so far. Starting in September, we reviewed with the board some of the operating budgets and then October. Um, the rest of the operating budgets, the capital program, a major budget overview on the tenth, the, uh, community-oriented budget Boonanza, a week after that. Uh, and then we're here tonight for the budget update. And then, uh, we have currently scheduled the actual budget adoption on the twelfth of December. Just to give a recap of the whole, whole process, several months long. So just to highlight some of the changes since the last time, um, it's been about four weeks. So, uh, the board gave us, uh, some direction along the way, so we've made those changes that I'll talk about. And then other things change as well. Uh, for instance, um, looking at the budget the last time, um, and this was something that I, uh, uh, didn't get right the first time. The, uh, use tax for building materials is allocated between Parks Fund and the General Fund. And I had that all in the General Fund bucket last time, but when I went back and looked at the adopted budget, forty percent of it was allocated to Park. So I, I made that change in this budget. So it's, uh, it draws down the General Fund a, a little bit, but, uh, helps the Park Fund. And we'll, we'll look at that when we get to those, uh, those charts, those tables. And then some of the other, uh, bigger items that have changed since then is that, uh, town staff has looked at the estimate for building permits going forward. We're always looking at revenue estimates or in this case, building permit, uh, estimates that affect revenue estimates to come up with the, uh, the best, um, idea of what to look for going forward. And in twenty twenty-four, as we mentioned in the staff report, uh, we lowered the permit number estimate in twenty twenty-four from seventy to fifty, um, just to be conservative and to, uh, make sure the numbers, uh, are not, not overshooting what we think might happen. So that had an impact on several funds that, uh, you see listed here. The General Fund, the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, as far as reducing revenue, the tap fee revenues in particular. And we'll look at those funds in more detail, but this is just kind of a high-level overview. And then the, the raw water is a little bit different. Um, not that we expect less there, but raw water, um, can be, um, we can get that, those revenues in the form of either cash in some cases, and in some cases, in shares of water from, uh, whoever, uh, the proposer of the development is. In this case, the estimate is that, uh, we have ten permits that are, um, that are in cash and the rest would be uh, in, in water shares. So that, that reduced that piece of the water fund balance. And we'll, we'll look at how the water fund balance breaks out in, in a few slides forward. But obviously, that seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars reduces that, uh, by quite a bit. It d- doesn't mean we don't get benefit from that, uh, uh, from those development fees, but it's in the form of an asset. It, it's still, not to get into the accounting, but it still hits the balance sheet in the form of an asset of water shares as opposed to an asset of cash. But since we're talking about the budget and the budget is largely on a cash basis, uh, that's how it in fact impacts here. So it's not a loss of revenues per se, but it's a, a loss of cash flow, put it that way. And then, as we talked about last time, um, being conservative, I was, uh, I, I didn't include grant revenues, uh, last time. So we've added in grant revenues this time, went back and, and talked to the rest of my colleagues and tried to find out, well, which grants were well along the way as far as being, if they've been, uh, not only submitted but a, adopted. And now it's just a matter of doing the project and getting reimbursed that we've added those in. So that, that helped the, the streets and the storm water funds, um, quite a bit. And we'll, we'll look at the changes of that when we get to those tables. Other changes were, um, we, between the last budget update and now, um, at the direction of the board and the, the further direction of your town administrator, uh, she asked that all departments kind of comb through their budgets for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four um, and just look for areas where think, uh, where, uh, expenditures can be cut back or can be reduced. Um, and so we did quite an exercise there and it's, uh, uh, it amounted to three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in the General Fund and another hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in, um, in the other funds other than the General Fund. So that, that helped the budget along the way. Um, a- another thing that the, uh, board gave, uh, staff direction on last time was grants to the enterprise funds. Uh, the idea here was how can the General Fund help in particular the water and sewer fund financially? And one way to do that, and we'll look at this in more detail too, would be to simply grant, um, what's legally allowed to grant the ten percent of revenues there. And so what this did was it added, uh, almost one point three million dollars to the Water Fund and another three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to the Sewer Fund. So we'll look at the impacts of that, uh, too. But this, uh, that was, uh, um, a, a substantial change since the last time. One of the biggest changes since the last time we talked about, um, last month. Also, the, um, your, your town administrator asked us to look at, uh, the overhead. Overhead has been a big discussion administrative overhead and for those who are listening and now that's the cost of having, uh, one of our special funds or an enterprise fund, uh, providing services. The General Fund provides services to those funds like H R and finance and those sorts of things. And so, uh, those funds get charged for those services. Uh, but the, um, it had been a couple of years since we had looked at what are those, how do those percentages break down? So she asked that we, we look through that again and, uh, we went through that exercise and it ended up, uh, generating a little over two hundred thousand dollars in cost reductions for those overhead costs in the water and sewer funds. And then, uh, finally, uh, kind of a significant, uh, uh, increase is, uh, uh, in twenty twenty-four. Our best estimate now is that, uh, the, the, um, the N P I C, the North Pudra Irrigation Company, a, a dollar amount will go up by three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. Um, uh, offsetting the sting of that a little bit, I, uh, just got a copy of the invoice today for, uh, twenty twenty-three and the invoice came in two hundred and, for twenty twenty-three, came in two hundred and thirty thousand dollars less than what was budgeted. I literally just saw that invoice today. So, um, right, what we have in the budget is a million seven thirty-eight, I believe, for this year. And, uh, it'll end up being a, a million five oh seven. So, um, that's offsets the sting of this a little bit. And, and I don't have that factored into these numbers because I, I just, uh, got that invoice today. But the numbers we look at in the Water Fund will be just that little bit better. So that's just a, a brief highlight of some of the bigger changes since the last time. Uh, so I thought, a- and again, I will try to march through this efficiently. We would spend a little bit of time, uh, let's see if I can move this out of the way. Okay. To spend a little bit of time, this is a snapshot for anybody seeing, looking for the first time of all town funds in one place. And so we won't dwell on it because that's a lot of numbers on one screen, so I apologize for that. But I did wanna, uh, point out a couple of things. I've broken this chart down into, uh, the section at the top, uh, that shows net operations. Wanted to give a sense for, um, just the operating activity in each of the funds as opposed to the capital activity, whether that's getting loan proceeds or bond proceeds or capital projects. So in this case, you can see, for instance, the General Fund, uh, shows a minus six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in, uh, net operations. So normally that would be a, uh, red flag and it didn't look that way when we were last here. I was actually a positive, almost four hundred thousand dollars. But the, the, the change here is if you look up a couple of lines, the transfers out that million and sixty-six thousand dollars, that's, those are the dollars that are going to the water and the sewer fund. So the decision there, um, for those who, who weren't here for the last meeting where the, uh, the board discussed this, uh, was basically, um, a decision to draw down on the general funds fund balance in order to assist to the maximum degree we could, the water and the sewer funds. So that's the reflection of that. So normally I would be alarmed showing you a, a minus number. Uh, but that's a, that's a decision. That's a, that's a choice that the board can make. Um, and if you drop all the way down that first column, that seven point three million dollar ending fund balance, um, that is still substantially ahead of, uh, the, uh, board-directed, uh, uh, guidelines for ending balance in the General Fund, which is two point seven million dollars. So whereas the, this is, that's not a plan that could go on in perpetuity. Um, it certainly works, uh, at, at this point and still leaves a healthy ending balance. So, uh, just wanted to point that out, um, in particular. Uh, the other pieces, I think we can talk about when we get to the individual slides. But I just, I just wanted to show that when you look across net operations, the General Fund is negative. The Parks Fund is negative and we talked about that last time, but I'll, I'll point it out again, um, a little bit. But otherwise, the, the, and then, then the Sewer Fund is negative. And we'll talk about the Sewer Fund in particular as well. Okay. So here's the General Fund. So same numbers in that twenty twenty-four column that we just looked at. We end with, uh, seven hun- uh, seven point three million dollars in ending fund balance. Although I, I didn't break this one into net operations versus capital, just to save a little space. But this shows just a little bit of a trend over time. Uh, we see now that in twenty twenty-three, uh, we're showing a minus eighteen thousand dollars. So kind of almost break even in twenty twenty-three, the current year that we're in. And again, that's because that, uh, um, that program or that policy that the board, uh, adopted last time around, you can see there's transfers out to the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund, uh, five hundred ninety-nine thousand and three hundred and thirty-six thousand. So that, that drives this year slightly in the negative, but again, the same reasoning would apply. We still end with a healthy fund balance and it's helping out those two funds, um, in, in that, uh, in that way. And in twenty twenty-four, I think we talked through that. I, I guess I'll just point out, if you look at those two lines, transfers out to Water Fund, transfers out to Sewer Fund, you can see that in twenty twenty-two, now twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, um, there has been these, uh, these transfers out to assist those funds. And in fact, the, uh, the policy that the board adopted last time would include twenty twenty-five as well. Since that budget's not on the table yet, I don't have that column showing here. Uh, but for planning purposes, we would show that same amount in, um, in twenty twenty-five as well. And then, and in fact, the, um, you know, the water and sewer rate studies that we, we talk, uh, that is gonna be talked about later on, uh, include for planning purposes that, that amount in twenty twenty-five. The Street Fund, and just sort of marching through this and, and please feel free to stop for questions anytime if you have any. Uh, the Street Fund is, uh, different from the last time because there, there were significant grants that were added in there. So though we're, we're still negative in the Street Fund by a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, it was closer to a million dollars last time. There was, there was, we applied a, a large street grant, uh, to, it was for capital projects essentially, and we have more grants, um, more grant dollars available than what I was able to apply this year. You just can't apply more than you expect to spend in any one year. So, uh, if you look at the grant page, there's, um, something like five million dollars worth of grants there. And I think I'm, I'm showing here a little over a million dollars worth, um, because that's what we expect, uh, in those grant funded capital projects for twenty twenty-four. But those grant dollars will then benefit those future years as well. So that brings the Street Fund to, uh, a healthy, almost five million dollars, uh, in ending balance. In the Water Fund, uh, we talked about the, the transfers in from General Fund. So the Water, Water Fund changes from last time. It's a little bit of a mixed bag because we, we talked about earlier how, uh, revenues because of permits reduce. So that would have impacted tap fees in the Water Fund. It impacted the raw water fee that we talked about. That was a rather large one. And then the, uh, the N P I C water payment went up some. So those things were negatives. On the positive side, we add these transfers in from the General Fund. So, uh, those were somewhat offsetting. So we, we end up with, uh, about a three point three million dollar ending balance, similar to what, uh, we saw last time, um, because of those, those ins and outs kinds of changes. And if you break that, um, three point three million dollar balance into the three different reserves in the Water Fund, uh, we see that the impact fee reserve, uh, ends up in the black slightly, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The raw water fund, uh, the major change there is that revenue of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. It was a lot higher. It was over a million dollars the last time we looked at that. So again, not losing revenue, but the cash flow is what's changed here. Um, and then operations side, uh, that's where that, for twenty twenty-four, that six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars transfer from the General Fund gives us a, a, a better looking million dollar ending balance, uh, in the water reserve for, uh, for that year. So that, that, that made a big, big change in that, that reserve in that fund. In the, in the Sewer Fund, um, we also show the transfers coming in from the General Fund. Um, there were some ins and outs here as well. The, the tap fees, uh, also were affected here to some degree. But we still, uh, end up with a, uh, slightly larger ending balance, seven hundred thousand dollars at the, at the end of this than we did the last time. Um, and the, the Sewer Fund is, um, has, has some challenges that we talked about last time. So I've included a slide here and, uh, that I wanted to talk about a little bit because the Sewer Fund, um, is one that even despite the, um, the transfers from the General Fund, because of the reductions in, in growth projections, the, the Sewer Fund is gonna show our current modeling, um, even with the transfers of the General Fund shows a one point five million dollar shortfall in twenty twenty-five. I guess the good news is the last time we talked, it was higher than that. It was over two million dollars. Um, but because of the board's decision for the, have the General Fund help out as much as possible, it is, it is a little bit more manageable amount here. So that would be in twenty twenty-five. So it's, it's not something that the board has to make a decision about, um, you know, in the ne- this month or next month. Um, but it's something that obviously we should start planning for and, and thinking about. Um, how do you, how do you cover that, that balance? The, the, the Sewer Fund budget doesn't have a, a raw water reserve that had dollars in it to, to help balance out the ending balance there. So some options here just to begin thinking about. I don't have a recommendation tonight because really it's a matter of letting next year play out so that we can, we can see, because there, there are variables here. But one, one thing that could, we could come before you next year with is, uh, an interfund loan for that one point five million dollars so that the, the Sewer Fund is not, um, upside down. We, we try to avoid that where we can because that's gotta be paid back. And, uh, so you have to build in debt service there. So we haven't done that yet since that's not in twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four is in the black, seven hundred thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-five, um, i- is not. Uh, now, given the, the current estimates, um, in the, in the sewer rate model, by twenty twenty-eight, it, we're in the black again. It turns around. So it, it is a, a fairly short-term thing. But still, you, you have to address a, a negative balance if there is one. So it could be an interfund loan. We could reconsider in twenty twenty-five the, the timing of capital projects. Um, that year, there's a couple of substantial capital projects there. I, I know that, uh, our public works folks have, have, uh, looked hard at that and have already trimmed that back the, the, the best they could. But it's one of those things, if you just don't have the money, that sometimes you have to look at different ways of doing things. So that would be another thing is reconsider some of the timing there. Um, and then there could be potentially some savings from the contingency account for the, um, large, uh, treatment plant project that's going on. That's an unknown, um, for now. If there would be any savings or if so, how much it would be, we won't know that for several months. Um, so that's a- actually not until late next summer or fall, as I understand it. So that would be one that when we get to fall of next year, um, if the one point five million dollar shortfall is still, is still hanging there in our projections, then, then we would need to start looking at things like the timing of capital projects at the contingency account and see if anything happened there and any other options that we have. So that's that last bullet as, as, as we approach that, uh, that mark. So it, I'm a little, being a little premature here, but it's just something I wanted everybody to start thinking about that, uh, you know, uh, despite best, best efforts, there, there's still a negative balance there. Um, and it's, it really, it has to do with growth. I mean, when you, when you build a model, you have to build in, what do you, what do you think the growth is gonna be? How many permits you think there's gonna be? Um, and that has been reduced a couple of times, uh, just given, you know, the economic conditions, uh, currently. So, um, as I mentioned, um, that permits in twenty twenty-four reduced from seventy to fifty. And there, there was reductions in the out years as well. Um, so that's, that's why we have that, that negative amount there. So just wanted to put that before the board, just for a kind of an early thinking point, uh, on that. But no, no decisions are needed right now. Storm Drainage Fund, not a whole lot more to say here, other than there were some additional grant revenues in here so that ending balance looks a little bit better than, uh, than last time, uh, at one point three million dollars. And then, uh, finally, the Parks Fund. And then, uh, finally, the parks fund, um. Got it. Some additional revenues from that, that change between the general fund, um. Use tax for building materials that I mentioned, forty percent of that, that now goes here. And, and of course, that's, you know, that, that split is in the board's control, but that, that's what it had in the budget. So, uh, that's, uh. That's what we, wh- where, where we left it, of course. Uh, and then we have, uh, I think the others haven't changed too much. So we're, we're upside down, um, six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in that fund. And I, I won't go over the long explanation there, but just as a reminder, or for those that might be looking at that and wondering about it, uh, a park fund. At least in my view or by my experience, it's, it's the sort of thing, it's not an enterprise fund, just so everybody's clear, this is not like water sewer and storm drainage that generates. This park fund does generate some fees for recreation programs, but it's not primarily fee based. And so. Um, it's not an enterprise fund. It's considered a special revenue fund, uh, just means it receives revenues just for the purposes of parks. So it's the sort of thing that you, you wouldn't normally expect. The revenues you earn from recreation programs and park programs could completely pay for itself, especially things like debt service and capital projects. So, yeah, that's why even that negative number doesn't alarm me, especially since the ending balance is still. Uh, considerable. I mean, if we were six hundred thousand dollars upside down every year and the ending balance was going away, we might want to rethink, you know, what the program is. Uh, but that, and you can see in the previous years, it was, it was much more break even, but, uh. Anyways, those are some comments and thoughts on that. So that is. The, I believe that's there. That's the last slide on the finances before I ask, uh. Uh, Ms. Anderson to come up. I just wondered if there's any, any questions on the finance, uh, part of it so far.
Trustee Tietz?
I do have some questions and one of my questions is addressing an issue that was brought up earlier today. Um, via email, and that is involving the. Idea that the numbers being presented to us today are not completely accurate, correct?
So the budget numbers that were offered in the financial reports, not in the budget document. So the budget document ones match 2023. It was the ones in the. Financial reports at the end of our packet that do not match.
Got it.
Correct. Thank you.
Um, so this is kind of the generalized idea where. I truly feel when you look at the progression moving forward. And you look at the federal interest rate and you see that it is still not coming down, but we are. Continuing to spend more, almost a million dollars more. Than what we did in the previous year. So when I look at it, we're going to be almost another million dollars negative. And fund balance by the time this budget gets approved, if we don't do something. To look at additional cuts. I know that. Sacrifices were made and I appreciate town staff doing the three hundred and eighty-five thousand in general funds, hundred and ninety-six in the other funds. But I still see. Ten thousand dollars for abandoned stage for Fourth of July. At the end of the day, I love those kind of events, but we are talking about debt. But we are still planning like. We don't have issues that we're, uh, dealing with and addressing. So my concern comes from. Honestly, I feel that the number needs to be decreased more. There has to be additional ways to save funds. Um. One of my ideas that I would like to know is when you look at, when we were doing the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant. And you look at the request for bids and information, and we have all of these additional items coming to us after. The original loan amount was approved. So we're looking at SCADA, we're looking at additional PLCs. What I would like to know is the increased or additional upgraded PLC, is that something that was in the original? Request for bid or did we figure that out? At the end of the contract, there's a lot of things coming up that I feel could be part of the contingencies that were allowed in that loan. And I would like to know if that funding helps or relieves any stress on the water wastewater fund. If those amounts are coming from those contingencies. So I think that there's more that can be done. I truly feel that. We absolutely need to look at how we're spending other people's money. Because this is not our money and. I know that we had made discussions about decreasing the mill levy for the property taxes for here in town, as that was approved and municipalities can choose to do so. So if we look at decreasing the mills, that will relieve some of the stress from homeowners and maybe look at. Setting it or doing an offset balance to however much we're looking at raising the five percent. If we can look at what that five percent looks at and then getting that percentage back in their property taxes, and that's how we adjust that mill. To kind of, we have to start hitting a point where we, we do sacrifice some things that we love and enjoy. I just, I see this balancing dwindling and dwindling and dwindling over time, because if you look back over time. It has been decreasing. It hasn't increased. So I just want to be mindful of how we're spending and going into what very well. Could be another financially difficult year for everybody. So those are my comments as of now. Um, I do have additional ones, but when we move on to the. Salaries and pay increase, then.
Trustee Gator?
All right. So the first question I had is, um, I know you put in the, um. Grants, is it possible to add both the grants from the town as well as the ones that we've received? Can we recognize those in a line that's separate from on both ends, the expenditure and revenue? Because what happens is it makes it look like we had more revenue coming in when it's. Yes, it's grant revenue, but it's not ongoing, right? It's not sustainable revenue technically. Can we separate that out? So it's, so you can see revenues, which is literally just our revenues that are coming in, expenses are literally just our expenses coming out. And then the transfers and grants are separate. So they still factor into the total. But we can look at the revenue versus expenses and see, because that's the problem, right? It looks better with the grants and with the transfers, and that's part of the reason we approved. Um, or I guess it's on our agenda for tonight. Um, but that's part of why we said we wanted to do those was it helps out, but then. If you actually look at, okay, what's the revenue versus expenses, you still see we're, we're not in a good spot. And so when you tag those into the revenues, it makes it look better than we are. And that was the issue the town ran into years ago, was that the. Money for tap fees was getting lumped in with operational revenues. And so it looked like the water fund was doing fine, when in reality it was going backwards. And then when they finally figured it out. So I just. I want to make sure we don't get into that same. Issue. So if there's a way that we can just separate out how it's recorded, so that the grants and loans show up not as part of revenue. And part of expenses. So we can actually truly see revenues, expenses, and then all those other things can separate out. So if we could do that, that would be awesome. I had a question, the, I know the CAC program expense, that's like our, um, holidays and things. There was a huge increase. Did we lump the fireworks into that line item now? Is that now part of that? Okay, okay. I was just trying to find why that was such allergic. Thank you. The other thing that I had is we have the magistrate in the judicial, and I know that that was decreased. And I know we had it lower last year, but I know Mr. Sapienza mentioned last meeting that we're going to be going back to having court monthly. So my question is, is that number from the magistrate too low now? Cause I know we reduced it because last year we were holding court. That's still going to work for every month?
It was budgeted for, uh, having court monthly based on the, the judge's salary.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that, I, I wasn't sure, so I figured I'd ask. Um. In the ju- no, that one, I know what that is. Second. Um, the, I know we had talked about for the Wellington Senior Resource Center, that we were going to provide potentially additional funding. We had talked about moving that into the board discretionary fund. I'm still seeing that under administration. So is that the normal? No, you're good. It's under administrative budget, budget. Sorry, I have this all on a spreadsheet, cause it's easier for me to. The twenty thousand nine hundred, I don't know if that's the normal, because I know we had talked about, because we have the seniors van separate, but that's, I think, been removed. So I just, I'm not sure what, because it looks like it's a new. Line, but I know we talked about doing a portion, I think fifty percent of the ask. Budgeting and then the other fifty percent, putting that in the board discretionary fund.
I, I thought that like their total ask, I thought was around forty thousand dollars. We had said that we would grant them the twenty and that you wanted them to go out and try to fundraise the other half.
Okay, yeah. So if you could just double check that and make sure you can shoot me an email, let me know. But I just wanted to make sure that that transition that did get moved, because I didn't. It didn't look like the board discretionary got increased. So I do want to make sure we still have the funding appropriate. Okay. Um, question on the finance, um, accounting and auditing, why is the accounting and auditing so high? Understand that we have the twenty-two and twenty-three audits that we need to pay for. Still, but that doesn't explain, because I know our budget from before was for twenty. One and twenty-two, so it was two audits. Yet it's thirty grand higher. So, and I know that. Baker Tilly is a separate line item, so I'm trying to understand why the accounting and auditing is so high.
Yes, so, um, i- i- it's what it is in twenty twenty-three, because it was supposed to be for two years, you're twenty, um. The, the forty-two thousand, is that what you're looking at?
Um, let me, seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand. Yeah, okay.
Yes, seventy, apologies. I had to read it for a page on my page.
Okay, that would be. So it, we're, we're hoping twenty twenty-one finishes this year, so that'd be twenty twenty-one. So it, so in twenty twenty-four. The audit for twenty twenty-two would happen and then an audit for twenty twenty-three. So we think there'd be two audits in the, in the following year. And frankly, the, the amount is larger because I, I, I don't. It will, we'll find out soon, but I, I don't think, uh, the market will support the, the kind of rates that we were getting earlier.
Got it.
Is what it kind of amounts to.
Okay.
Actually, we're, we're expecting to get RFPs, uh, at the end of this week. So we'll know, we're going to talk to the finance committee Monday.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll know Monday for sure, and maybe this one can be reduced.
Okay.
But I think that was me, uh, looking at what. To get an audit done, uh, really costs and, um, and that would be for two years.
For two years. Okay, got it. I was just trying to understand, because then, so we had, the rates that we were looking at from the prior two years were very low compared to what is out there. Thank you. Um, professional development under finance, I believe we had discussed moving, removing or not doing the Casell training this year. So I was curious. What that is, it, it looks like that's still in there.
Uh, so professional services, we did remove, we're going to do every other year, the Casell training. Professional development, we're going to do that every other year. That's the Casell, that's the financial management system training. But there are still dollars in there for a training with the Government Finance Officers Association or the Colorado Finance Officers Association. Basically, uh, for the, the, the finance director and our budget and accounting analyst to keep up to date on, um, changing. Skill sets. So the dollars that are left in there are for that kind of training, not the, um. Casell training.
So what's our cost? Cause our budget last year was three thousand dollars for that and it's ten thousand five hundred dollars in twenty-four.
So it's, yeah, I've, I've got it broken down. I didn't bring that with me. I could certainly, I could certainly send it, but that's. That's for, um, those employees for if they were to, they may not attend all of them, but if they were to attend. The Government Finance Officer Association Training and the Colorado Finance Officer Association Training, um. That's, that's close to what it would, close to what it would cost. Part of that is just, I, I've got a, uh. Um, sort of an emphasis on training and keeping skills up to date is what that, what that amounts to. Things, uh. Doesn't seem like if the things change in the finance and accounting world, and if we're not keeping up our skills, we fall behind and, and things slip through the cracks. So. Um, it, it may not end up being that much, but that's, uh, that would be, uh, allow them to be able to do that if it worked out.
Um, under the clerk's office, uh, for the R and M computer equipment, we've got five thousand dollars. I think we only have two people. Are we paying twenty-five hundred dollars a lap, a computer nowadays?
Not to my knowledge, trustee Gator, um, that number is just a projection based on if one of our computers fails and we need to, uh, replace it. I, I believe that, um. We could likely find a computer for less than twenty-five hundred dollars, um. I'm happy to reduce that number if it's necessary. Okay.
Can I address that really quickly also too? Uh, I did have a chance to speak with, uh, Ms. Anderson, uh, as far as PC purchases. The laptops that we are currently purchasing are sub one thousand, they're about, uh, nineteen hundred, or sorry, uh, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Um, but a lot of that additional cost also includes, uh, your monitors, mouse, keyboards, docs, uh, software licensing, these types of things. Um, I, I still believe for an individual employee, though, it comes in far less than twenty-five hundred dollars. I, I, I think that number could likely be reduced.
Okay.
But I just want to make that clear that we are not spending.
Okay.
Twenty-five hundred dollars per, per laptop.
That's good. See, I, I'd like that if we can try to make that more to what we think it's, I mean, I don't know if, if it's, you know, both computers are failing, that's fine, let's budget to replace those. Um, but I prefer we keep that to roughly what we think we're going to spend on that. Um, the other thing in the clerk's office, I'd really, uh, we, we have budget for two elections. I really like an explanation as to. Is there a specific thing that I don't know about that is upcoming as to why we're budgeting to elections? Because otherwise, we shouldn't be budgeting for two elections.
So that, that's allowing for citizens who petition. And then there may need to be another election, because, uh, last year, twenty twenty-two. Uh, there were those four petitions that came through and that would have required an election.
Yeah.
If they did, we just want to make sure that we had the capability to support the citizens movement, if there is a citizens movement.
Okay, we've never budgeted for multiple elections. We've never had multiple elections. Um, so I, we're not in a good financial place, so I don't, and unless, again, if there's something that is out there that we know the citizens are upset about, that's fine, but. Like when we, when the marijuana thing was coming up, we knew there was going to be an election, so that needs to go in the budget, but as far as I'm aware, there's none out there. So I wouldn't, I don't want to be. Continuing to raise the budget by something that, oh, that's possibly could happen when we're, i- if we had. Millions of dollars in excess, great, but we're in the negative in all of our funds. So unless there's a specific thing that's upcoming, I prefer to see us just having the budget for one election on that. The. Professional fees in human resources, why the huge increase from that? We went from three thousand dollars to twenty-one thousand dollars. Cause I know we have separate things for like executive search or separate, so I'm trying to understand what that is.
Stephanie Anderson, HR Director. As for our compensation study, we are looking to continue to do those every other year. So we completed one in twenty twenty-two. We'd like to budget one for twenty twenty-four to make sure we're keeping our pay at the market rate.
Thank you. And then the employee relations committee, that's doing like gifts and things like that for employees, or is that a separate thing that we're?
Yes, I'm Stephanie Anderson again. I will, um, so the employer relations, what that looks at. Is we do our milestone recognition from there, which is a set program for years of service for a milestone pay. It covers lunches for team meetings and all staff meetings throughout the year. It covers, um. Some just special lunches for teams. It's nothing. Out of the ordinary. And then it also would cover like a holiday party if we go forward with that. And just to make sure we have items at staff meetings.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what page is that? Is that the one that said it forty thousand?
No, it's twenty thousand dollars is the budget for, up from five fifteen thousand. I'm sorry, I'm looking at my spreadsheet, which is not the packet. It's the human resources budget.
We also did build additional funds in there for both our wellness and our safety committee as well. And those committees were built this year to help really enforce a better safety program, which we need for our insurance. And then our wellness committee to try to find ways to interact better with their staff and promote wellness.
Okay, so we have the safety and wellness committees. Do we also have an employee relations committee? Is that a third committee that we have?
So the line, the name of the line is a little deceiving.
Yeah.
The employer relations, it's really meant for our recognition.
Okay.
It's meant for these two committees. We do not have that. It's meant for these two committees, we do not have that employee relations committee.
Maybe we can just fix the name, just whatever is appropriate, employee relations is great, but it makes it sound like we have a specific committee that that money is going to, so it's a little confusing. Um. In IT, we have the nine thousand dollars for computer, is that an IT-specific computer, is that for a different department, or what's that for?
In the budget, there is an additional quote for a switch for MSB building, so we, we need more ports.
Got it, okay, and the sixty thousand, that's for law one, correct, the professional services?
Correct.
Please.
I'm sorry, what is MSB?
The municipal services building, sorry.
Sorry.
So and then the increase in the software licenses, is that just the prices are going up, are we increasing the number of software? Because that went up about twenty-two thousand dollars.
So what that change is looking at is we're looking to bring on a new court system into Casell. We're also looking, um, we are looking at a full year of an HRES system to help continue to improve our payroll and our HR functions. But that was decreased, so it would be more of a mid-year launch rather than a full-year launch.
Okay, and so the, so I know we're, we're projecting to end twenty twenty-three at about a hundred and five thousand, so those, those additional things are going to be about seventy-five thousand dollars, an increase?
I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but they definitely are going to see an increase.
Um, that's all I have for IT and HR, the next question I had was in planning. Um, I know we're talking about reducing number of permits and everything, yet we've got a seventy-seven thousand dollar increase in building inspection fees. Is there a reason why we are going to, we're budgeting so much higher for building inspection fees when we're saying that permits and things are going to be down?
Good evening, Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Thanks for the question, Trusty Gator, um, the reason we left three hundred and fifty thousand in there is we're currently processing several commercial permits.
Okay.
And some of those commercial projects that we're looking at right now are multi-tenant, meaning they do a core and shell building, and then they come back in and submit another application for each individual unit. So we're trying, we haven't always budgeted a lot of the commercial impacts in there, we're trying to kind of dial it a little bit.
Okay.
Usually what we see is our revenues for, uh, revenues and expenditures for the inspections and plan review, um, are not quite what we base on for just residential, so we're trying to balance that out based on the projects that are in the queue.
Perfect, thank you, and then while you're here, professional services was also increased, is that, do you know what that was about thirteen thousand above the budget from last year?
Um, the professional services, um, wait, we're sorry. Same page, right?
Yeah, it should be the same page, it's just two lines down, I think.
Yeah, it's.
Professional services didn't change from the last buzzer, unless we're looking at different line items.
Two oh one eighteen.
Uh, yeah, go to page seventy-eight in the packet.
Again.
Fifty-three, fifty-six.
Yep, you're right, it's the same, sorry, my bad.
That's okay.
You're good.
Good, easy to clarify.
Yep, that, that was easy, all right, um. That's all I got for you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but I'm really distracted by the huffing that's going on from this side of the room every time a comment is made, typically I won't say anything, but it is getting rather redundant, so I would just ask that.
Not coming from me.
No, it's not, but I would just ask that, kind of.
I just had allergy or sinus surgery, and I'm, I apologize if my breathing is too loud, but I will try not to breathe, I suppose, I apologize.
Thank you.
I can't hear you.
And then in the water fund, the increase in chemicals, if I recall correctly, that's because of the new plant, we're expecting chemicals to be more expensive, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Trusty Gator, Trusty Daily.
Uh, yeah, I don't sound like you've done. Sorry, let me double check, no. I'm just, I'm, I marked off everything I had questions on, so I'm just making sure that I'm. Um, yeah, the, and then is it same thing for electricity and sewer, just because of the new plant, okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure, um, those were the main things that I had, um, I echo a lot of the concerns that Trusty Teets had. We're looking at a really rough financial situation in terms of our funds, our economy is not in a good position. Um, and I think that we need to look at where can we reduce things further. Um, we're going to be talking about water rates here in a little bit, and we're asking our residents to do with less, because we're, we're going to say, hey, we need to take more from your water bill to pay our bills. Um, and I have a problem when we're increasing our budget, but we're telling our residents they need to do with less. So, well, I have other comments, we'll get to other things, but that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Trusty Daily.
Uh, regarding the elections, I do want to address that, that was on my list of items to talk about, but given that in one year, we had the potential of, I, I know we talked about planning for two elections, but in one year, we had four citizen initiatives, meaning that any citizens, you can petition the community, you can bring something to a ballot to vote within the town of Wellington, it's a beautiful thing of our country that we can do these type of things. I love that, so in one year, we had four of those initiatives, they happened to happen at the same time. Had they not, though, there is requirements that they go to ballot, they go to an election within a certain amount of time, once those, uh, petitions and everything have been verified. So in one year, we had the potential, depending on one of those timings, of, of having four plus elections. So, um, in my mind, uh, budgeting for two, uh, I think is a good in-the-middle meeting there, because, uh, saying, oh, well, that's, might not happen, uh, if you were to average out the last three years, I would say it would. So, um, that, acknowledging that, I think it is, uh, our responsibility to make sure we plan for something that could potentially happen, and based on historically, is likely to happen, um, so for the two, planning for two elections.
Could I touch on that real fast?
Yeah, absolutely.
Trusty Gator, I know you mentioned that you, you'd rather not budget for it. If it were to happen, what would you recommend we do if we didn't budget for it?
Um, the same thing that happens whenever we have any expense that comes up, we look at where, I mean, we, every year, we have savings in other areas, and we find where those savings are and apply those towards the election.
So you didn't have anything specifically thought out, or we just?
I mean, I've got lots of ideas on how to save money, but I don't have one specific laid out for if that's to happen. I'm pointing out that in the, to my knowledge, we had the marijuana initiative, and other than that, I'm not aware of any other special election that has come from the citizen initiative.
But there is one other situation that could require a special election, and I think it's important for the board to consider leaving that in the budget, because our health and wellness as elected officials is all important as well, and something could happen to any one of us at any point in time, we do have the opportunity for appointment, but given the current climate of our community, I'm pretty sure we would end up going to a special election. So we can't see or read into the future, I think that it's a good idea to go ahead and plan for it just in case, but valid point, Trusty Gator.
Okay, so.
I, I mean, similar to municipal court, we don't necessarily know if there'd be items every single month, but we still budget and plan for it just in case. So I, I, in my opinion, just based on that as a discussion point, I would suggest that we would keep the two elections there, regardless of what reason might come, come up, so we've mentioned a few possibilities, so, okay. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention and give a really big, there's so many thank yous in this budget that I'm seeing in front of me. Um, I've acknowledged a couple of them before, but we might have a different audience right now, so I want to make sure that everybody's aware, and plus there's some additional thank yous that need to be given. So the first one being that within the budget you see before you, there's included more grants. Um, our staff is, they are relentless. That word is, is usually not a positive word, but in this case, they are relentless in this, the pursuit of grant dollars for our town. Um, the millions, I'm not exaggerating, the millions of dollars that they brought into our town, um, within the last couple of years, and of course, what we already mentioned, that can't even be allocated in this budget, because they go for even the more, more future years from now, is astounding, um. We've seen the improvements from budget, um, uh, budget versions now and here, we're continuing to see those, and those are always positively impacted by different grants. So thank you, thank you, thank you to our staff that is, uh, seeking, and it's not just seeking and trying, but winning the grants, so, um, that is excessive and amazing, so thank you for that one for first. Um, the other thing that happened from, uh, the last version to this version, and not necessarily is the direct directive from our board, was the staff from all the departments coming together and looking to see where they can make more cuts. Um, those aren't necessarily things that were, they were specifically directed to do, but our town administrator, um, asked them to do that, and they found an additional almost six hundred thousand dollars of potential savings in this budget that are included in the one in this version. So in addition to bringing in all these extra dollars in grants, they're also making all these additional cuts and recommendations, um. Uh, and, and presenting them to us without that specific direction, and I think that is amazing and so responsible, and such a great example of, um, how the staff is understanding exactly, you know, the situation that we're in, and they're acknowledging that. So I wanted to say thank you for that, because that is a lot. Um, and then it's, unless you've been following the budget process closely, um, these, these things are complicated, of course, but, uh, the idea and the mention of the grants from the enterprise fund to water and sewer, general fund to water and sewer funds, um, that's saying not necessarily the money you're paying for your bill for water and sewer is paying those funds, that's taking money out of the general fund, so for example, from like tax dollars, sales dollars, sales tax, and you, and, um, allocating that money that shouldn't be necessarily utilized for water and sewer, but, um, granting that money to those, those funds. So, um, what we saw over the past, uh, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three and onward is a significant amount of money that the board is considering for next year, but or has historically, um, granted to the water and sewer fund in order for the, you know, utility payers to not have to pay those millions of extra dollars. So we're going to talk about more of that later for, uh, two thousand twenty-four, but I do want to acknowledge that in case anybody is looking at that and not quite understanding, because that's not a normal thing that should, or, or, not normal thing that happens, but that we're, we have historically chosen to do and are considering later in the, as an action item. Um, and then there was something said earlier, I totally understand it, but I could, it could maybe raise a red flag. Um, so I just want to make sure it's clear, because I don't want the rumor mill, mill to start, but, um, it was mentioned that the, the funds that were used for staff lunches, um, that the term was saying all-staff-meeting lunches. So it's not that all staff meetings have lunch, it's a, it's the special, special instances of staff meetings where they get the entire organization of the town of Wellington's staff together, which rarely happens. So just in case anybody took that as, wow, every lunch meeting for the town of Wellington, they get free lunch. That's not what was said, it was just for very specific and special instances. So I, I, I use those phrases all the time, but in case anybody was listening and, and maybe not quite understanding, I wanted to make that clarification, uh, it would be a lot more than that if it was for every staff meeting. Um, and those are my major things, but overall, thank you so much. This has been the most comprehensive budget process we've done so far, so as a, we saw the timeline, so many opportunities to provide feedback and update and get more accurate numbers as more two thousand twenty-three data is available. So thank you again for everybody working on this budget process.
Thank you, uh, Trusty Mason?
Yeah, and I, I do apologize, I'm just getting over cold here as well, but, um, Mr. Rhodes, I wanted to say thank you for the updates tonight. Um, I do appreciate you guys going back and, uh, being a little bit more conservative about building permits this year. Obviously, if we see over fifty, that, that will be nothing but a good thing, but I, I do anticipate that twenty twenty-four is going to be a tough year just due to, uh, uh, you know, where, where the national climate is. Um, Ms. Garcia, I really appreciate you taking back to the teams and getting that three hundred eighty-five thousand in savings back to the general fund, uh, very good stuff there. Um, uh, obviously, we're going to be talking about it later tonight, but I think it's absolutely essential that we do that ten percent, uh, transfer from the, uh, for enterprise fund revenues, uh, out of the general fund and in there. Um, I just want to be clear, I think that if we did not do that, that the five percent increase that we'd be talking about would actually be more than five percent. Um, I also do want to make it clear that, uh, through the rate study that was done with Raftalas, you know, we knew last year at their recommendation that we would be doing a five percent increase each year for five years. This is not in perpetuity, but these funds need to be able to pay for themselves, and uh, un- unfortunately, uh, well, don't get me wrong, we, we like having wet years, this, this is a good thing, but there, there's an impact with that, right, that comes back to the fund revenues, and if we are not making up uh, the, the amount in, in revenues that we need to be able to make, then, uh, you, you know, that kind of impacts us adversely, so. Um, it's like I said, I do think twenty twenty-five is going to be a little difficult. And Mr. Rhodes, I really do appreciate you giving us some options just to think about as far as the sewer fund. Um, I'm not really a fan of intra-fundal loans and that sort of thing, because obviously, we, we still have to pay those back. Um, but, you know, I, I really do appreciate you just giving us some options to think about, so. Um, but otherwise, I want to thank all the staff, I mean, the, I know you guys have put a tremendous amount of effort in this. Uh, Patty, I'd love it if you could go back and just ask, hey, if we could just squeak out a little bit more on a couple of things, that, that would be, that would be awesome. Um, but, uh, I mean, the, these are what the numbers are, and, uh, I'm looking forward to getting this budget done, so.
River Ten?
Mr. Rhodes, thank you so much for this very comprehensive and detailed presentation. I think that since you've come on board, you've been given a very large task that's been very demanding, and thank you for all of the time and effort that you've put into putting together this, this budget. And thank you to the, the staff that stood up in front of the firing squad and answered, um, a bunch of questions so knowledgeably. Patty, I think that's a direct re- reflection of your leadership of the staff, and it's extremely impressive how you were able to motivate your team to go back and find mindful cuts in their budget, and ask them to do so much more with less in a growing community. At the end of the day, this board has extremely high expectations for the staff, and I am very impressed with the budget that's been presented. The challenges that this town has walked themselves into didn't happen overnight, and we won't walk out of it overnight. But I think that Mr. Rhodes has done a fantastic job presenting some solutions that give us an opportunity to be mindful and take a very diligent approach about how we'll go about solving some of these challenges moving forward. I don't have any significant concerns or change requests to the budget, the only concern I had was removing that one election, so I do very strongly support that we do leave those two in there.
Mr. Rhodes, thank you very much for doing what you've done and, and really dialing in and dialing down on these budgets to make things as transparent as we possibly can. Um, I've seen improvement year after year since I've been here, I, you know, I haven't been here that long, but, um, it's nice to see us getting cleaner, so it's easier to understand. Um, yeah, and I appreciate the staff for, for going back with what the board had discussed previously, um, to find cuts and trim things up. I know our staff's already, you know, pretty trim as it is, um, trying to get things done for our town, and, and that's a difficult thing to do, so I do appreciate that. Yeah, so thank you for the presentation, I don't, I don't have anything further to say until we get down the road on, on things here, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, yeah.
Five.
Oh, oh, yeah, the Mercola stuff. If the Sanders should like to come up.
Thank you. Um, Stephanie Anderson, HR Director. So another piece of our budget we wanted to mention tonight is the consideration of merit and cost of living adjustments, which is known as COLA. Compensation can be viewed as the value an organization places on employees. We want our staff to feel valued, and we have to ensure that our compensation is viewed as internally equitable, externally competitive, it also must be legal and defensible. The current proposal is a three percent cost of living adjustment or COLA adjustment, and a three percent merit pool. The town currently follows a pay-for-performance model, meaning that staff's pay is tied directly to their overall performance, and the merit pool is assigned to staff based on the score of their reviews. So merit can provide financial incentive to be a high performer, and it may increase productivity of our staff and help us retain them as well. Um, COLA is proposed at three percent to give all staff members a three percent increase of. Um. COLA is proposed at three percent to give all staff members a three percent increase of their salary. And this is to help keep up with the market and inflation. COLA is not tied at all to performance. I did want to touch on retention as well, so we have seen a decrease in our exiting employees. Um. I compared looking at September twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two compared to September twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. And we did see a a decrease there, which was good to see. And of course, there are different reasons why people leave an organization, but pay and benefits can contribute to that. When someone leaves an organization, it causes both hard and soft costs for the organization. So soft costs, those include the loss of productivity of somebody leaving, the increased work for other members of the team, loss of productivity for the manager to try to hire someone and train someone, and then also the learning curve for a new hire. Um. A loss of an employee also does lead to some hard costs as well, such as paying out of accrued vacation leave, um, the costs associated with the recruitment, the cost to train, along with others. So these costs can add up to tens of thousands of dollars for each exiting staff member. So as mentioned, we're proposing a six percent COLA and merit pool for our staff members. Um. The numbers that have been presented to the board over the last few months in the budget presentations have included a six percent change. So the town is estimating to spend thirty-five percent of its operating budget on staffing, which is lower than the statistics from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics stating that in state and local government, fifty-eight percent of the operating budget is spent on staffing. So represented on the slide, you will also see what other municipalities are looking at doing for the twenty twenty-four year for merit and COLA. All right. And then another action that we take to help retain our staff is our health insurance and our retirement plan. So our health insurance premiums were increased across the board by five percent for twenty twenty-four. And while staff will take on some of these increases, um it does have an impact on the town as well. And in total, the town will spend nine hundred eleven thousand dollars on benefits. And then um our our staff, they're really satisfied with our current health plans. And we're really proud to be able to offer our staff good rates for themselves and for their families as well. The town also does offer a match in a four oh one A retirement plan. We're not proposing any changes to the twenty twenty-four plan. And based on salary and employee contribution, the budget for the town is at two hundred seventy-seven thousand, a little over. Um. And I really just wanted to end with um staff are our most valuable resource to our town. It's important to consider where town dollars can make a large impact on the people when we are reviewing and creating a budget. That's it. Turn it over for questions.
For Trusty Daly?
Within our strategic plan adopted by this board for two years, um we we actually listed staff as town infrastructure. I don't know. It it seems weird to say that, but that's the category in which we uh we listed and the importance that we we um dedicated to staff. So one of the four pillars of our strategic plan is infrastructure. So just as important it is as uh building, you know, our water treatment facilities, we also put on their prioritize organizational strength to retain, attract and support town staff. Um. We say all the time, we appreciate staff. We say all the time that they're doing amazing jobs. I I say all the time that I I cannot believe the talent um and quality of staff that that work for the Town of Wellington. And it is really a job of service. It is not fun most of the time. So um. But when we say that, and I just said, but you can't follow that with a but. You know, you can't say we have the best talent around, we love them, we need to keep them, but and then not put our money where our mouth is. So we've indicated that of the four top things that this board wants to do, infrastructure and making sure that we have a community that um is maintained and supported by valuable infrastructure means staffing. Um. And they mentioned, um, you know, soft and hard costs of attrition. Um. But that doesn't necessarily even it uh that's just having people doing the jobs. What we need, though, is the talented people who have a passion and love for the Town of Wellington um and who are empowered to do everything above and beyond. So when we do things like uh not provide opportunities for them to work hard and get merit increases that are directly related to their job performance. Um. We're saying that I that we don't value your performance. So that it's a direct relation. That's exactly what it is. Merit is for performance of your job. If we're not giving money for performance, we're saying we don't value your performance. Um. So the uh I looked up the um inflation value for two thousand twenty-three, it's three point seven percent. So our COLA value isn't even meeting inflation. So for I wanted to make that point, that COLA doesn't even meet inflation. It's or it's almost one percent less, right? So um the merit, in my opinion, needs to be three percent. We need to do um, you know, industry uh standards. We need to show our staff that we don't just say we love and support them, we also pay them because that's why they're here, to get paid to do their jobs, um pay them accordingly. So this is so important. Um. We may get people to stay just because they love our town so much, but will they be empowered to move mountains like they've done in these last few really trying years? No, um, that's what, you know, the value of showing value for your staff does. So in my mind, this is a non-question, non-compromise item. We have to pay our staff what they deserve, and we have to give them the opportunity to earn as much as possible based on their performance. Um. And uh it it would be a shame, and it would, if we at every meeting acknowledge how amazing our staff is, and then when it comes down to this moment, pull out the rug. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge everything we've said. I want to make sure that we acknowledge that we've all agreed to our strategic plan and created this plan, which acknowledges how important our staff is. Um. And I just need to make sure that this is not, this is not one of those sections where we can see where we can make the cuts. This is our most valuable asset to our town. Um. So uh I I could go on about this forever. This happens to be my industry organizational leadership, um so I cannot um explain enough how important it is to show value in our staff. And I love that they like our benefits. That alone will keep somebody for good health insurance these days. I my company doesn't have great health insurance, and it it causes me so much stress. It causes me stress. I don't go to the doctor when I should. I get sicker than I should. I mean, good benefits mean better job performance as well. So I really appreciate that everybody um is it likes our benefits.
Thank you. Trusty Gator?
All right. So my main concerns on this come back to what I said earlier, when we're looking at our funds going in the red. Um. I appreciate the work that staff's doing, but if we run out of money in three years, no one's going to show up to work when we can't pay them at all. Um. The other thing is looking at our salaries. I know we've done roughly a five to six percent cost of living. Um. But if you look back over the years, twenty-one to twenty-two, it was a fifteen point four five percent increase in wages and salaries. And we're about a nine point five percent increase in wages and salaries this last year. And part of that is, if you look at it, it's a six percent increase, but that doesn't take into impact any of the vacant positions, which is four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars worth of salaries, which we did not eliminate those positions, they just weren't filled. So unless we're actually going to give someone a raise one year and then lower their pay the next year, we've actually increased what we owe to employees when we're fully staffed by far more than the six percent. And when you look at the raises, everything was five percent to twenty, thirty percent. There was also have been a lot of increases where we have new positions that have been, I guess, new promotions or things that into new positions that are at huge increases over what was approved. And that's my concern is that we haven't been seeing increases in wages and salaries when you actually look at the numbers that are six percent. It's been far over that. And we're sitting here getting ready to tell our residents, again, we're in a bad financial situation, we're going to raise your bill. This board, I think, very wisely at a work session earlier this year, when looking at board compensation, said now is not the time to raise our pay of our trustees. Our town is in a rough spot. Okay, that would have been an impact of like twenty-seven thousand dollars on the budget. Okay, great, right decision. The impact of raising salaries, doing all of this, is multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars impact to the budgets, and that's across all the budgets. That's not just in the general fund, that's the water fund, that's the sewer fund. I understand people want to get paid more. I talk to people all the time that they're not getting paid more, they're getting paid less. Their companies are having to cut money out because the economy is not going well, because their revenues are down. We're in that same situation. Our revenues are down, our expenses are up, and we're saying, well, we're just going to keep giving raises. It it does not continue forever. We're, I look at it, we're in the financial hole, and we're continuing to dig the hole deeper and try to figure a way to get out. At some point, you have to stop digging if you ever want to get out of the hole. So I personally would be comfortable with looking at a COLA because I get it that things are hard. But I think that we need to say, we're asking our residents to tighten the belt, and we need to do the same thing. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Trusty Heat?
First off, I will say, because the comment was made earlier, that we don't value someone because we say a raise isn't warranted right now. We absolutely value every employee that comes through the Town of Wellington. There's not a board member up here that I don't feel appreciates our staff. We ask hard questions. We're not a firing squad. When we have questions, these are things we were put in this position by the people. We were elected to this position. It's a generalized idea that, you know, we lose staff, it's trustees have been accused of causing staff to quit and finding out the truth behind why employees are actually quitting was a a really rude awakening to me in general and finding out that it absolutely has a minute percent to do with our trustees. Um. But at the end of the day, there is, if you look and actually evaluate, I was sent this awesome demographic. There is sixty-one thousand five hundred and eighty dollars planned in payroll, and Patty, I'm more than happy to give this to you that is above the budgeted amount for twenty twenty-four. I would like to know where the sixty-one thousand five hundred and eighty oh eight is actually going to be applied. Um, is this fluff money that's sitting in those accounts to possibly give an additional merit raise? So that's something that I would love to find out in the future. Um. But this has nothing to do with disrespecting our town staff. And I really, I really hope that our town staff doesn't see it this way. But I would agree to the COLA raise, but I'd also want to see we have comparisons from the likes of Fort Collins, Firestone, Estes, Timneth. Their operational budgets are more than double what our operational budget is. So I would love to see population comparable and what their revenues are comparable. When I look at these positions and you say, Stephanie, you told us that it's an equitable distribution of pay increases through the town. But I'm not seeing the equitability in some of these pay raises compared to other employees. So I don't assign the payroll, I don't assign the merit COLA base. But I do not feel, if you look at some of these positions, it's equitable. I looked at openthebooks.org. And there is a lot of towns that the employees do make a lot less and they are still thriving. It's not that I wouldn't want to give the pay increase. It's I don't want to be someone who sits up here and tells our residents that your water rates are going up, but we're going to give our town a raise. And that is what makes it extremely difficult to say I don't disrespect any of the town staff. I don't support giving a pay raise when residents are going to be struggling. COLA, fine, but the three percent merit? We've seen a lot of pay increases. We just did an additional pay increase. Was it last year or the year previous? Stephanie?
So we ran a compensation study in twenty twenty-two that did put pay changes into effect for twenty twenty-three.
Got it. So we did see pay raises last year. We're asking for additional pay raises this year, and I get it, it was a compensation study to bring everyone level or as level as they could. But we're just, we're headed into a very tricky twenty twenty-four, and I want to be able to pay our employees at the end of the day. If we keep drawing negative, it's not going to go very well.
Thank you. Reverend Tim? Trusty Mason?
Yeah, I uh I I like a lot of what what's been said tonight. I think, you know, obviously, there's a lot of lot of different things that we're dealing with here. I I do think it's important, though, that we uh show our staff that they are valued. I I think it's absolutely imperative that we do the three percent COLA. Now, I think there's maybe an argument we can have about whether it should be six percent or five percent total. I suppose personally, I'd be a little more fan of the five percent. We can save that forty-one nine ninety-three um and put that back in the general fund, but you know, I think it, I think it's a difficult, you know, especially in the market that we're in, and when we have uh municipalities that are just down the road that are willing to pay more for the same positions. And, you know, a lot of these folks will come to town here and get trained up to do something, you know, some of our water operators, that sort of thing. They'll be out there doing that for a while, and then they find out that they can go down to Fort Collins and make ten, fifteen thousand dollars more a year and for the same job. And I you this is, I think, what makes it difficult for Wellington, right? We 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 have to remain somewhat competitive. So I would still prefer to see the two percent merit, three percent COLA and call it that.
Thank you. Reverend Tim?
Thank you so much for the detailed information in your presentation. Similar to the what we experienced with water rates, the reason why we do compensation studies is because every couple of years, if we're not keeping up and doing this data analysis on what it takes to pay these people fair market value for their salary grade, they're going to move on. And the way that we keep our water bill low and we obtain those grants and we save the money for our citizens is by recruiting and retaining that top talent that has the knowledge, skills and ability to be able to use those high-level thinking skills and education to benefit the community. So we're cutting ourselves short by constantly trying to train people up and not retaining them. The other piece that is so important about that merit pool is that is it, and I'm speaking as a town manager here. When you give your employees something that they can work for, sometimes that means more to them than the compensation itself. Just because we say it's a three percent merit pool does not mean that every employee is going to get that three percent merit increase. It means it could be point five percent, it could be one percent, it could be two percent. But what it does is it gives those supervisors the freedom and flexibility to be able to put together measurable goals that provide a direct benefit to the town. For instance, those water operator licenses. If they are able to recruit some young person in that doesn't have any of those licenses, but doesn't have a college education, but is looking for a way to better their life, a water operator license or a CDL is a great way to do that. But you can't recruit and retain employees if you don't have that that value there. So I don't see that merit pool as a hard expense. We're not going to spend that full three percent. I believe that our supervisors have the ability to put together strong performance evaluation plans with measurable goals that provide a good, solid justification for those merit increases. I don't think that they're just handed out like candy. I believe that our staff does have to earn those. And the COLA, I mean, that's a given. I mean, with the cost of inflation, the cost of daycare, the cost of medical services, it sounds like our staff is going It sounds like our staff is going above and beyond to find, try and find other recruitment and retention tools. But at the end of the day, when you start impacting people's pocketbook, that's where you can have the biggest impact and where you really can see the biggest difference. So I am in full support of the three percent merit and the three percent COLA.
Thank you. Um. Roughly forty thousand dollars, soft and hard costs for a new hire. That's what it would cost every time. Um, yeah, I mean, we've seen a lot of change in our economy since COVID and we had like the great resignation. Things of that nature and people are leaving jobs and trying to find better opportunities and kind of touching on what trustee Mason stated. I mean, we are surrounded by communities that are far better off. They have much larger budgets. They can take people from us if we are not compensating properly. And for us to save money in the long run, we need to focus on retaining the staff we have, reducing the amount of overturn we have. We don't want to be a revolving door for Fort Collins to profit off of us and for us to lose every time. We don't want Tim to be able to do that. We want to be able to maintain what we have and grow with what we have. Um, I think it would be wise to invest in the people we have. Um, instead of de vest in them and in turn de vest in our town and the taxpayers. And then they don't deserve to pay forty thousand dollars every time we lose an employee. That's not, that's not fair. Um, I mean, we can talk about the water rates and things of that nature. Now that's a terrible situation. I mean, this entire board. I don't think a single one of us walked into a great situation by any means. Um, we are facing hard issues and we're attacking them head on and we take the brunt of that. I mean, all you guys know that. Um. But we need to retain our staff and treat them well. And so I am, I am in favor of the three percent merit and three percent COLA. And the fact matters is, yeah, not everybody's gonna get three percent merit. Um, it gives them something to reach for and they'll be based off their performance. Um, so that's, that's my stance. That's all I have to say on that. Um. Now we will open up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on the item, please sign in on the sheet on the table, approach the podium, state your name for the record and you'll be given three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees. Um, first I wanted to say congratulations, Mayor. Um. I think it's important. I'm, I'm a member. I don't know if I'm a former member, but I'm a member of both roundtables for the water and the sewer rates and all of that. I think it's imperative that no one sitting up here, and I mean to sound like I'm scolding you, to imply that water rates has anything to do with what we pay our employees. Those are two different enterprises and I see this stuff on social media all the time and I beg town staff to find time to do a Wellington one-on-one, to inform residents of how these things work. One has nothing to do with the other. Enterprise funds, our water rates, those are all regulated by the state and they don't have anything to do with whether or not we choose to give our employees a raise. So I just want to make that really clear for the people in the audience, people that are listening and for you all, because misinformation is the biggest enemy of this town and the support or lack of support of our residents for the hard decisions that you all have to make. And the water situation is terrible. But with that in mind, I would remind you as you're considering whether or not to approve these raises, that many of our staff live here. So while yes, I understand the rationale of saying we're gonna give a raise, but also your water rates are going up. Are you gonna look those same employees in the eye and say, I'm gonna raise your water rates, but I'm sorry, I'm not gonna give you any more money for working tirelessly for this town? I think that's a really bad message and it just lacks humanity, if I'm being really honest. I didn't plan to speak on any of this, but I was just offended by some of what I heard. Our employees make less than other towns. I track a lot of the open jobs through Northern Colorado. All these other municipalities pay more. Yes, they make more, but they have more economic viability than we do. So what I would like to see as your, as a resident and as a taxpayer, I will pay the full mill levy because the town mill levy won't make a huge impact on my overall property tax bill, just saying. Um, but I would like to see us pay our employees, thank them, appreciate them. Stop nitpicking little things. Let's focus on economic viability of our town and economic development. And give the town staff the time and the tools and the availability to do that, because that's what's gonna make this a better situation. That's what's gonna attract businesses here and people moving here and our permit levels will go back up because the other misinformation growth will help the water rates. Lack of growth will make your water keep going up. So the no growth mindset needs to stop. But I just, I just think we need to be more future thinking. Instead of trying to put out fires all over town, we just have burning ash everywhere. So that's my ask of you today and then I'll be up here to ask for something else nicely in a minute.
Thank you.
Trustee Gator, um, it was said that, um, that the merit is not gonna be fully spent. It's a pool. Um, but that the problem is they budgeted at least a three percent merit. So if they truly are not gonna spend it all, maybe you should budget less than the three percent merit. Also, every, almost every department budgeted more than the six percent increase. Uh, the water fund budgeted a hundred and twenty four thousand more than the six percent increase. The sewer fund budgeted a hundred and seven thousand more. Um, the park fund budgeted ninety three thousand more. I can go on, but, um. You guys need to budget less if you're gonna pay less. Um, it was also said water rates, um, are not affected by employee salaries. That's not true. Um, there's employees in the water fund. They're gonna get the six percent increase. Therefore, our expenses are gonna go up. We have the admin overhead, which is a percentage of everyone's salary that is part of the expenses in the water and sewer fund. So this does affect our rates ultimately. And at the very least, make the salary and budget line, the salary line item for the budget at least six percent or lower. If you're not gonna give them that three percent merit, but right now, uh, almost every department is budgeted for more than six percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, one more public comment. Any final comments from the board before we move on? Look at me if you got anything.
I have one really quick and I just want to, because I know we've had two public comments and two different people state two different things about the water. Can we get clarification? Um, is it Megan that can offer that clarification on if raises do affect water funds?
I can speak to that. So raises will affect so the water fund. So if, if it is in that. So our water treatment plant operators, they're like a hundred percent of that, but like, um, myself, I am at I think like twenty five percent of my salary. So it's dependent on what that overhead is. Um, so it's, it. I can't say that it affects the water rates, but it does, it is paid. It is affects the water fund. Correct. Thank you.
Trustee Mason.
Um, yeah, actually, just, just real quickly to maybe jog my memory on this. I, uh, Mr. Rose, I can't remember. But it was, was it, it was not required for us to move the admin overhead costs into the enterprise fund, was it? Was that not from the direction of a few of our board members? Can you clarify that?
If you're, are you talking about the, the change in the way we did the administrative overhead?
Yeah, yeah, correct. Right. Because it was all in the general fund originally, wasn't it, no?
Um, yeah, it's been done different ways, but the, the idea uh, of it this, this year was to have like the administrative staff, like finance, like administration that budgeted in the general fund rather than budgeted in the enterprise and the other special revenue funds. Um, and then there'd be an interfund transfer to show that, that charge, just to make it a little more clear, a little more transparent about what.
Just to clarify on that too. Was that, I, because I can't remember. Was that something you had proposed or was that something a, a few of our trustees had proposed?
I, uh, that was an idea I think I had early on.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that it was not at the direction of the board with potentially the same board members arguing against having a merit increase while also if everybody's kind of following what I'm saying there. But okay, so just wanted to clarify that. Appreciate, appreciate it.
I, I do want to state some of the increases for, uh, those costs also included some additional staff positions that are in the, in the proposed budget. So some of those increases weren't based off, and if you're looking at it's more than six percent, it's because there's additional, uh, positions also recommended. So uh, that might be kind of confusing when you're looking at the budget items.
So one of the things that I did want to clarify, and I think this will help with some of that. Um, the other thing that changed and trustee Mason alluded to that is we used to have the budgets and salaries. So for example, IT was budgeted out to multiple different funds. So some of the increase that you're seeing in the IT budget. Even if it's over six percent, some of that is those positions that were before in the water fund, in the sewer fund pulled back into the IT fund. So that would show if you look at twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, that will have some increase. So you'd need to actually look at, okay, what was IT spread out across all of those in twenty three and then compare that to the new twenty four number to get you a full number. So if there's still above six percent, that is definitely something we want to look at, but just because of how it's been done in the past, what was in a budgeted line item before looked like a smaller number than it is in twenty four, because it's actually spread out across multiple places. So that is one of the other things. But again, the concerns I brought up were not to do with that. That actually is looking specifically at what were our salaries paid year to date and what were those increases? So. Thank you. All right. Now we will move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title or the title of the items on the consent agenda?
D one, October twenty four, twenty twenty three, regular meeting minutes. D two, resolution number forty six dash twenty twenty three, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, making appointments to the Finance Committee and Parks, Recreation, Open Space and Trails Board. D three, approval to open safe deposit box at Points West Community Bank.
Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
And make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Chelsea.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. Uh, before moving on to action items, let's take a five minute recess. Thank you. All right. Now call meeting and board, Wellington Board of Trustees on November fourteenth, twenty twenty three, time being eight twenty back in session. Uh, Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title of item E six?
Letter of Support Safe Routes to Parks Grant Application.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, will you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. Wellington Safe Routes to Schools will be applying for a Safe Routes to Parks Activating Communities Grant and has, and has requested a letter of support from the town of Wellington. This is a ten thousand dollar grant. It is only available in Colorado and four entities will be awarded funds. The bonus is there's no match requirement. The grant application requires support from the local government. If awarded the funds, they will be applied as a match for the U S Department of Transportation Safe Right, Safe Streets for All Planning Grant. Lisa Chollet and Tim and Melissa Whitehouse, representing Wellington Safe Routes to School are here and can provide more details.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Ms. Garcia, sorry. Um. I had the fortune to attend a planning conference down in Colorado Springs. And on the final day, um, with, uh, Director Byrd, we actually went to a Safe Routes to Parks presentation, which is a new thing. Um, and it's out of the Division of Safe Routes to School. And this grant was the subject of that presentation. And the unique part about it is, is that it is only Colorado. It is only for, and you have to be a nonprofit in order to apply with town support. And the presenter of the, uh, presentation, she was very excited, even though I was there as a planning commissioner. She was very excited that a town was sitting with a nonprofit watching this particular presentation. And so Wellington's in a unique position that we are the only nonprofit Safe Routes to School in the state of Colorado. So we're kind of the poster child for this particular grant. And what this grant will do, it's very intense and it's a very quick process. So the grant is due next, next Tuesday, of course. Um, and two weeks later, they make a decision and it starts in January and it is a huge amount of technical support. They help with community outreach. They help with writing the plan. Um, you can choose different strategies. We chose the strategy of technical support for safe routes or safe streets for all grant, which just happened. That I'll come back to for another request to go after that, because that does require us as a partnership and the town would have to help be a part of that grant application. But the Safe Streets for All Grant has three point three five three billion dollars in it. And they did one round. Every single entity that applied for a planning grant was fully funded. And there's still money. So they're opening it back up again in February. It's a unique opportunity. The match can be in kind. This ten thousand dollars can be applied to that match. We can show that, um, according to the federal guidelines, we're a disadvantaged transportation community, which we are, we're like in the purple red on the bar graph, um, which we all know that because we live here. So this is a big step towards that. And we had options. We could have used it towards building out a safe routes to school program, more of the interactive fun stuff, but we feel like Safe Routes to School right now is in a unique position to provide support to our town that we love and to all of you and the town staff. Um, basically free of charge because we're all volunteers. We don't make a salary. Um, to go after grants and create a transportation plan and a connection plan and address things like getting from the east side to the west side, if you wanted to go to the community park. Right now, that isn't a safe option. There is no way for anyone to do that on foot or by, by bicycle or any of those things. So this grant will provide us an opportunity to put forth our best foot to get this planning grant. And with the planning grant, then opens a door for the town of Wellington to get implementation dollars. That can be paired with C dot because C dot provides all the support on this grant. Um, to start improving the infrastructure that isn't, if I'm being honest, on their plan right now, because just the bridge overpasses extremely expensive and that money is not there. So these, this opens the door for us to get a lot of money and Safe Routes really would like to provide the opportunity to the town, kind of that future thinking thing I was just talking about before. So it will require a point person, which will be me. And then once a month, there's a call and we would need, um, a designated town staff member to be on that call. Um, my hope would be that would be Cody or someone in that realm. And like, we can work that out with Patty. So that everything that we're doing is in alignment with comprehensive plan, the growth management plan, all of the same things that we talked about before. Um, and we still haven't heard about the other grant yet. We won't know till February. So that one doesn't make a decision fast. But as Patty said, there's no match on this. It's ten thousand dollars to use on this as a matching funds for this grant or other, um, Department of Transportation grants that we may choose to go after. If it's deemed that Safe Streets for All isn't a good grant for this town. So I hope that you'll choose to support us in this. Um, we're working hard to try to find grant money everywhere we can so that we can help improve things. Um, but we can't improve anything without a plan first. So that's where we stand. Questions?
Question from the board, start with Mayor Proton.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Chalet, um, a, a week or two ago, I believe you were in attendance at the county commissioner meeting in the morning and they talked about the Highway nine intersection. Is there potential through this planning grant that there's funding opportunities or conversation to assist the county in that planning for making that intersection more safe for both, uh, vehicles and pedestrian traffic?
Absolutely. And one of the great things is that I've been working a lot with all three county commissioners. And so thus far, they've been fully supportive of what Safe Routes to School is trying to do. Not in the stead of Wellington, but in partnership with Wellington. And so by working towards the Safe Streets for All Grant, we can literally address every connectivity issue that we have in town. And so this is top on the list. Between that and getting from the east side, those are the two things we talk about the most. So, yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the information.
Trustee Mason.
Um, just a quick comment and I just want to say thank you to our Safe Routes to School members. Um, I, I did want to highlight the importance of professional development and training when it comes to our staff and in this particular incident, uh, conference attendance. Um, by you being a planning commissioner, Ms. Chalet, and having the opportunity to go to that conference is directly what, how you were informed of this particular grant. So I just wanted to highlight how important that is for us to be able to go out there and uh, uh, get some of these things where we may have not known about them otherwise. So just want to say thank you for that and, uh, we, I support you a hundred percent.
Absolutely. And thank you to the town for the opportunity to go to the conference. Um, I worked with Cody and made my own arrangements so that I could be there all three days. So if anybody wonders, I paid for my own hotel. And my own food. And my own transportation. But it was an incredible opportunity, even as a planning commissioner, I learned a ton. But there's another part, partnership that I'm working on that I also made a contact there that also provides grants that is specifically for community outreach and things like that. So there's, there's just a lot of opportunities out there and sometimes it's having the right opportunity to be in the right place at the right time. And so I am working with Tim and Melissa, Lowry Moye, and Nick Ree David to take advantage of every opportunity we can so that we can just play a small part in helping Wellington get to where we want to be.
Thanks. Trustee Daly.
I have this personal philosophy where I always ask myself whether or not I'm raising the bar or dragging it down. Like that's my personal thing of when I make choices and what I'm doing. I'm like, am I, am I bringing up the average by doing this or am I just, so, um, I could only imagine that if all the concerned, uh, incapable residents of Wellington were able to put forth as much effort as members of Safe Routes to School. Um, and, and the fact that you guys have built a nonprofit, that you're a model for this is exceptional. So I just want to applaud you guys so much for spending so much effort. And I know all the members of your group and they come with excessive expertise in all facets, especially planning related. So, um, not to mention, you know, industry related. So, um, what a blessing to Wellington, you guys in general, but, and then also pursuing this grant also. So, uh, I wanted to say thank you for that. Um, and to speak to what you said, uh, the chamber got a grant immediately following CML, uh, not this last year, but the year before because of just something I had heard and I just sent their way from that and the connection. So yeah, those, uh, conferences and the connections you make there are priceless. Um, but I am in complete support of this. If there's anything we can do to help you get your work done and all this volunteering that doesn't cost us a dime, sign me up. I will sign all the letters. So, um, I'm just so happy and thankful that we have you guys in Wellington. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Gator.
Appreciate the work you guys are doing going out and getting grants. That's it. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
I am extremely grateful because I do know that some of those members are also sitting in attendance this evening. So thank you very much for your guys' efforts and energy and investment back into our community. Congratulations on getting the previous grant done in time. I know that that maybe was pushing the envelope for when you were able to get it submitted. So fingers crossed. Um, I'm absolutely in support of this. I know that people do what they can, when they can, with the time that they have. I know that there's time that you invest in our community that you probably don't have, but you sacrifice to make time to be able to do these kinds of things. You're passionate about it and it shows. So that speaks to the audience. If you don't have time and even sending a letter or showing support matters just as much of you being boots on the ground active. If you're in the community and you're making a difference, you do what you can and you give what you can and you give a lot. I'm grateful. Thank you.
Thanks. It's a team effort. It truly is. We each do so much and we all bring some of the same things. There's three planning commissioners on this, on our board, but we also bring our own personal expertise. And so, you know, Nick on the finance side and Lowry, she's a grant writer extraordinaire. So, um, Tim and Melissa, I, we, not one of us could do it alone. So um, and we were working late into the night while at the planning conference to get that grant submitted. So thank you for that.
Yeah. I mean, I just want to applaud you guys on being the servants that you are to this community and making a difference where you see one needs to be made. Um, you put your time and your effort where your mouths are. Um, you know, you see an issue, you don't, you don't just complain about it, but you do something about it. And, um, you help everybody in town. Um, you help our, our bottom line budget by having this nonprofit. Um, going after these grants and things of that nature. And so everybody that's involved um, in this program, I mean, you guys are perfect examples of opportunities that citizens and residents of our town can, can take to get things going. Um, help this community in the areas where, where we can't help ourselves without, you know, other people picking up the buckets here and there. And you guys did that. Um, so thank you from the bottom of my heart. Um, for doing what you guys do. I, I appreciate it. So you have my full support.
Thank you.
Um, any comments from the public on this item? No. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Move that we approve the letter of support for Safe Routes to, Safe Routes to Park's Grant Application.
Second.
Any final comments? Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the letter is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, Mr., or no, now we will, yeah. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title of item E one?
Certainly, Mayor Shosse, ordinance number zero-nine, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance recodifying chapter thirteen of the municipal code concerning municipal utilities.
Mistress Sapienza.
Just ready. Stay dry.
Um, so the ordinance in front of you is not necessarily an ordinance I particularly wanted to bring to you at this time. Um, in April of this year, following quite a bit of work between the, with the Finance Department and the Utilities Department, um, the board passed a recodification of chapter thirteen. The intent of that was really working on articles one, two, and three of chapter thirteen, which I would call kind of the operational portions of that. The changes had to do with billing and I don't need to get back into all of that there, but in that packet was a red line um, of the intended changes, extensive changes to articles one and two and repeal article three. The ordinance that was put in front of you did more than that, unfortunately. Um, that ordinance that was put in front of you should have included repealing one, two, repealing chapter thirteen and then putting back into place the modified one and two and continuing to have four, five, six, and seven, which are very important articles. They're just not articles we work with on a day-to-day basis. Um, we've done some work on this, uh, looking at it and, and it's, to the best of our knowledge at this time, this hasn't caused any particular issues now. Um, the reason we bring this in front of you today without really any advanced notice is needs to be fixed. We found this on Thursday, um, while doing some work. Um, it's one of those things where I'm looking through the code and I thought, I want to see article four, article five of chapter thirteen and it wasn't on Muni Cook. Um, it, it needs to be put back before there's a problem. So this recodifies, um, one and two as were changed in April of twenty twenty-three. And it puts back in place art, place articles four, five, and six, four, five, six, seven, that were in place immediately before that. This is really just a correction of a typo in that previous ordinance, but a very important correction. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Any questions? Start with, no questions?
I just want to verify that nothing is changing in this article whatsoever.
This are, the, what is happening with this ordinance again, one and two are exactly the same as were codified in ordinance four, twenty twenty-three, adopted in April. Article three is repealed as was done with that same ordinance and four, five, six, and seven are exactly the same as immediately before that was passed.
Perfect. No questions. Uh, any question from the public on this item? No. Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve ordinance oh-nine, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Final comments? No. May I get a roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Thank you for finding, correcting, and adjusting quickly.
Absolutely.
No, you're fine. That's why we love our lawyer. Uh, may I get a roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E two?
Ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the town of Wellington, Colorado, making adjustments to utility rates.
Thank you. Ms. Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works, Mr. Bob Gowing, the Director of Public Works, and Mr. Rhodes will present this item. Please proceed, Ms. Megan.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Again, Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. Uh, you have before you this evening, um, as the, uh, Mr. Moose just read, um, ordinance ten related to utility rate adjustments, um, also included in the description. Uh, I combined essentially a description for two ordinances that we're bringing forward, um, both, uh, ordinance ten and eleven, which is adjusting the capital impact fees for the water and sewer utility funds as well. Um, we are bringing this forward this evening for discussion with the board and the opportunity for public comment. Um, the motion that we have before you is to, uh, move to delay this for a vote to the November twenty-eighth regular meeting so we could come back and with any additional information that you may seek or need at that time. So getting into the background material, um, as trustee Mason mentioned earlier, so we are bringing this to you based on the rate study that was performed by Raftellus, um, as a reminder for those online and in, in the room in April of twenty twenty-two, uh, through Board Direction, staff contracted with Raftellus, a Colorado consulting firm to perform a, a comprehensive rate and fee study for the water and wastewater utilities. Previous to that, there had been, um, I don't want to say ad hoc, ad hoc, um, rate adjustments, but there was not a fully holistic approach to looking across both the water and wa- wastewater utilities in combination with both rates and capital investment fees or impact fees. Um, the results of that rate study or through the process of that rate study, there was an additional round table that was formed, um, ten-person ta- uh, round table of sit, uh, residents of the community, um, members of other boards and commissions. And it was a very interactive process when that, that process alone went on for several months. That round table did help define kind of the values that would shape the rate structure that would be put into place. Um, I listed those main pricing objectives that were developed through that roundtable process. Um, the main one being that essential water use pricing. So that is actually how, um, the, the consultant and, and the board with approval, we wound up with a, a, a rate structure now that does include a base use of volume in that, uh, base charge. Right? So there, the, previously there was a large base fee that didn't include any water for that use and we were able to include that. Um, it also really highlighted, uh, navigating customer impact as best as we can. Um, I do understand that previous to my arrival at the community, um, there was some really significant rate increases that came pretty back to back and seemed rather out of the blue, I imagine, for, uh, residents who are not paying close attention to board meetings on the weekly or the monthly. Um, one of the, the largest pushes for that roundtable was to try and minimize those rate increases. And one way to do that, minimize the impact of those rate increases. One way to do that is to have a steady approach to how you're looking to make those increases. Hence, there was the proposal that came out of that full rate study that was looking at five percent of rate increase annually across five years. That was in lieu of, of asking the board or citizens to undergo a significant upfront rate increase again. Um, that was unplanned and really difficult to, to navigate through. So we took that, uh, to heart when we brought these new, new rate structures to you. The end of that, that study did result in fully new rate structures for both the, the wastewater, uh, fund as well as the water fund. There was a, a lot of focus that was put on to making sure that growth does pay its own way and also making sure there was equitable, um, rates across customer classes. So there was no subsidizing of rates between either commercial and residential or irrigation, any of those customer classes. They were looked at separately in order to ensure that they were all paying their fair share of what it costs to provide services through those systems. Um, moving forward, then we did have, um, those rates were adopted in the fall. Actually, I think I was here at virtually the same date, November of twenty twenty-two, giving a very similar presentation. Um, looking for, to alter and to adopt the new rate structures. So those all went into place, adhering to the pricing objectives that were set by the round table, adhering to the recommendations that were, um, that came forward through the rate study from Raftellus. And, um, are provided in Appendix A in your packet. Um, we are bringing forward, uh, we had a, a work session a couple of weeks ago. We looked at this in more detail, but we are bringing forward that same five percent rate increase for both the water and the sewer fund at this time. Um, at Board Direction, we did go back, staff did go back, um, communicated with Raftellus, did some additional research. It did find adequate justification for an additional one percent increase to the previously proposed, um, impact fee both water and wastewater. So in, out of the rate study came a proposed four percent rate increase uh, across five years, so four percent annually for those same five years, based on construction cost indices. There was, uh, engineering news record, um, municipal cost index, C dot, construction cost index were all reviewed. Um, there is definitely adequate justification to be increasing that this year. I will say staff would propose that we come back. That's not, um, that we would come back and review that annually as those kinds of inflation factors can change from year to year. So it's it's a little necessary to be able to go back and review that. So at this time, we're not proposing that that would be, um, five percent across the next several years. Um, but we would come back as we have, um, and look at that annually. So those are, that's really the most significant change, um, from the work session presentation that we had a couple of weeks ago. And I am open to have any questions that you may have to field any questions. I do just want, want to emphasize again, this is um, really in response to ensuring that staff fully understands the impact that this has on every household in the community. Um, one of the things that we're trying to stick with is that very regulated, methodical approach to applying these kinds of increases. So there's not that kind of, kind of whiplash that comes from a dramatic rate increase as has seen through the community in the past. And that is part of this proposal.
Thank you.
Start with trustee Gator.
Excellent. So thank you very much, Megan, for presenting that. Um, I do appreciate the methodical approach, um, having been through all of these rate increases, it's definitely not. Um, so I guess I look at it, I don't have issue with um, kind of the process that we've gone through to get to the rate studies. My continued concerns with our water fund is this deals with one half of the equation. In an enterprise, there's two sides of the equation. There's your revenues, there's your expenditures. And the revenues, with the exception of when we do grants, which we already approved to do those, that money comes out of the pockets of our clients, which is the water users and sewer users in the town of Wellington. And my concern is that I understand we're past the point, we've got the debt, we've got all these things, we have to pay for them, right? Uh, Mr. Rhodes did a great job of giving us a presentation that shows us going multiple millions of dollars in the red in the next two years in both funds. That is a massive problem that we have to address. So I understand the need for the increase in revenues. The concern that I have is the reason that we're going so massively in the red is the level of expenditure we have. In largest part, that is the debt service that we have on the plants. Um, I raised this concern three, almost four years ago that I didn't know that we could afford those and we're kind of seeing that come into play. We're in a point where if new building doesn't happen, I know it was brought up, well, new building will help the water. We're in a point where if new building doesn't happen, I know it was brought up, well, new building will help the water rates come down. We put ourselves in a situation where that was our only option. We didn't give ourselves another option. We, we put ourselves in a place that if new building did not happen, we had no choice. Um, my concern continues to be is that if we're sitting here coming to the residents and saying, we're increasing your rates, we're increasing the revenue side, but we're also increasing the expenditure side. We're not doing our part to help lower the other side of the equation. Now I get some things we can't, we can't, well, we're working on negotiating with North Pooter and I appreciate the work that staff is doing on that. I appreciate that they're working on things like that. We as the board also need to be looking at saying, okay, what are things that we need to say? We can reduce expenses and there are things that do impact the budget. It was brought up earlier. Staff pay does not impact the budget. It absolutely does. Is it the sole factor? No. Is it the biggest? No, it's not. Okay. Our water bill is the biggest. Our loans are the biggest. Those are the two biggest things. We can't impact those. But we can impact those other things in our budget as well. And that's our job as trustees. Okay. It's been said many times, we're fiduciaries. Our responsibility is to the town of Wellington, not to a specific resident, not to a specific employee, to the town itself. Part of that is, is we're looking at a situation where our fund's about to go negative. We need to be very cautious. Yes, we're looking at raising the revenue side of that. What are we doing to make sure that we're reducing the expenditure side at the same time? So from my standpoint, I'm not willing to support increasing the cost of the residents unless we're also doing our part and cutting things down and saying, hey, we're gonna buck, we're gonna buckle the belt. We're gonna reduce what we're expending. We're gonna, we're gonna take a hit on our end as well. So that's kind of my thoughts on this.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
Uh, a lot of people forget sometimes that a requirement of serving on this board is that we also live here. So, um, and, and that's something I have to remind people, uh, when we're talking about water rates is I pay them too. Um, and I'm also in a very tight budget, you know, I'm a single income, single mother. So, you know, when we increase rates, it impacts me too in my pocketbook, not just me representing you all in your pocketbook, but it's mine too. Um, and what I do appreciate and I, a lot of, this hasn't been acknowledged and it's not going to be a popular statement, but I'm gonna make it just because, um, we need to talk about, uh, the rate pay, the, the structure change that occurred last year. Um, you know, but trustee Gator and I and, you know, others and, uh, uh, Mayor Brotem were on the board when we did other rate increases and they were not so eloquently done, um, based on resident involvement. Not based on considerations of values and purpose and rate structure. Um, we, we had to do it in an emergency situation, unfortunately, and it, and it, uh, was a drastic increase, um, for everyone. Uh, so, um, I think last year it was very strategic and that's why we pursued such a holistic view is because we saw that that wasn't a way to approach residents. Uh, we couldn't continue to change rates, change and increase and how they're charged and, and where and what completely different every year. So that's why I do appreciate the approach in which, hey, this is the new structure that we're using. And then we have, uh, a consideration for five, only five years, uh, within that initial plan, but keep in mind, we consider the budget every year, um, of a five percent increase. Uh, I saw some concerns about every single year, five percent for four, for, for, forever. So I just want to make sure, uh, that people understand that was kind of the plan, but it is acknowledged every single year as part of the budget process as we are doing right now. Um, this is the part that's not going to be so popular. Uh, when we're looking at essential uses for households, we were looking at averages and how much, you know, is the essential use of a household. My household happens to be, you know, under or at that essential use. And my water bill did go down with the new rate structure for most of the months with the exception of uh, irrigation years in which it went higher than it was prior, but that was very directly related to how much water I was using for irrigation. So, uh, a lot of households in our community, and these aren't going to be the loud voices, but again, there is a silent majority of our, of our community that don't come to meetings and generally those are the people who aren't having issues, right? They're not speaking out and being really loud when things are going okay. So, uh, a lot of the households that use that minimum, um, water usage are able to restrict their water usage or, you know, really have minimal needs, uh, you know, single people living alone. Me, a single mom with only two kids, uh, we, our water usage and our, uh, active use to use less water caused our bills to go down for half the year, essentially, when we're not irrigating outside. And that makes sense to me. That makes sense in how the water structure, how the billing structure is working. Um, that makes sense. So if I conserve more water, my bill is more, uh, i- it is, is, uh, better for me. Um, and especially in those months where we're really using limited water. So the, the purpose and values of the rate structure, I think, make sense. There's a lot of thought and consideration from residents that made that happen. Residents recommended that to our board, um, in what we adopted. So the five percent increase, I mentioned earlier, when we were talking about cost of living, um, increases for, uh, inflation rates last year was three point seven percent. So when we're talking about raising the rate of a utility by five percent, um, I guarantee you it's not to make all these fortunes of dollars for this purpose. Um, and then later on in the action items, you'll see that there is, uh, some other proposed things where this board is considering, um, allocating money to prevent additional increases that would be necessary otherwise for rate increases. So I hope you guys hold on to that, if that's something that you're here for, to see what else the board is doing to help. Um, uh, the other part I wanted to mention there is, uh, is really the every single year, the, the most complaints and the most I've heard from people is when will it end? Five percent, five percent, five percent, five percent. Um, there's discussions about, uh, when the town is able to grow again and we have more people buying water. Um, there's a potential and opportunity for rates to go down for everyone. And that's where I want to see us someday get to that point, um, where it isn't, we're not asking for money, more money every year. Um, so I guess my general theme is, you know, conserve water where you can and understand that this is a community effort and your five percent are making sure that you have a sustainable water and good utility available for our entire community. So, um, and it hits my pocketbook too on those hard months. So, uh, that's, that's really what I wanted to share to acknowledge some of the feedback I've gotten from the community.
Thank you. Trustee Mason.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Ms. Smith, for taking a look at this. Um, I, I, I do understand that, um, for a lot of folks, this, this is a bit of a hard pill to swallow. Um, I, Ms. Smith, I just want to say thank you for listening to the board on the, uh, suggestion to look at impact fees and increasing that from four to five percent. Um, this board's always said that development needs to pay its own way, and I think that, uh, getting those guys in line with what the residents are going to be looking at here is exactly what, what we want to do. Um, to trustee Gator's point, I, we are certainly looking at things to bring down expenses, specifically renegotiating, renegotiating the nineteen eighty-three agreement. Um, Ms. Smith has suggested that these types of things are going in a positive direction, but again, none of these things happen overnight. Um, so we'll hopefully see the fruits of that labor over the next year or so. But I, I did also want to highlight just to, uh, some of the things that trustee Daly's also mentioned. Um, you know, eighty-five percent of Wellington residents use seven thousand gallons a month per year on average, right? And if you're looking at, in, at that in total water cost and not including sewer, that's a bill of ninety-six dollars and fifty-one cents. Now, I see all the time on Let's Talk Wellington or this net that, uh, folks are paying four hundred or five hundred dollars a month. And these are folks that are what I would call extreme outliers, right? This, this is usage of in excess of twenty-five thousand gallons of water per month. So I just want to highlight for some of those residents, if, if you think you're not getting even close to that, I would recommend reaching out to town staff, understanding whether there could be a leak on your property or something like that, because that's, that's a pretty significant, uh, uh, volume of usage compared to the rest of the eighty-five percent of Wellington residents. So I just wanted to highlight that. Um, but again, I do understand that this is a hard pill for, to swallow for folks, but these funds need to be able to pay for themselves at some point. And the only way we're going to get there is to look at both sides, make the rate increase and also understand what our expenses are and bring those down. I, I, to trustee Gator's point, I think that's, you know, that is something that we are actively looking at and we'll continue, continue to try to make that work. So thank you, Ms. Smith, but, uh, yeah.
Number ten.
Utility rate increases are never a popular topic. I am, um, really thankful for the education opportunities that I've had to learn about what goes into a water bill and how that number comes to be. It's not just pulled out of a hat and it's not there to make money. It's there to just make that, that fund equal what it takes for us to deliver those services. I think where Wellington can give ourselves a pat on the back is that we were a little bit ahead of the game in comparison to many other communities in Colorado. There are several communities that are going through this exact same thing that didn't do rate increases for many years. And some of those communities are looking at anywhere from eighty to a hundred and twenty dollar increase just to the water base rate. So I mean, that, that's a significant impact. So I'm very thankful that we don't have to look at those types of increases to our water bill. So although it's uncomfortable and it's painful every year, I just want to extend my deepest gratitude to the front lines and the utility billing staff because they, they deal with the brunt of the utility rate increases. So kudos to you guys. You're very much appreciated. It's a hard job, but somebody's got to do it. So thank you.
Trustee Teets.
And I'm the what else can we do human? Um, so the only things that I deny, this is definitely gonna have to have support from the board, but I would like to see, we have seventy-four additional water shares that are my understanding useless to us at this time because they can't be transitioned from non-pot to potable water without going through heavy extenuating issues with water court. So what I would like to do and what I would like to know is exploring the sale of some of those shares to offset that. So we're not constantly reactive. We're proactive when we're looking at what that looks like if they're not usable to us. And they cannot transfer over to potable drinking water. Why couldn't we look at the sale of some of those to help cover those negative costs? I mean, a share of North Pooter irrigation raw water is what? Two hundred and twenty-five thousand a share right now? Um, so that would be one idea that I would love to look into. The other idea is leasing this water back to the farmers that could utilize it. I know that we did have some sales of some lease of the water. Um, but I would like to know what it looks like to actively pursue leases and just let farmers know. Cause I, I know there's farmers out there that had their water shares cut when they decided to decrease that allotment. I would love to see what it looks like to go and actively pursue farmers that would like to do a lease of the water. Um, what it comes down to is it feels like we are asking residents, one, you have to conserve and this is water efficiency. So our residents conserve. We did not make revenue off of their conservation and now they're, they're getting fined for conserving is kind of what it feels like. I know that that's not the total reality, but at the end of the day, when you look at it, a wet season, great. What happens if we have three more years of wet seasons and people start conserving more water? Those rates are going to go up. It has to. Honestly, at the end of the day, because the water revenue has, the enterprise fund has to pay for itself through impact fees or residence costs. Great. We're looking at doing additions of homes and stuff like that, but those are more users that create more water demand, even with the water efficiency. So my concern is, is we're robbing Peter to pay Pa- Paul for the transfers, the inter-fund transfers. Um, we call it a grant. I'll just call it what it is. We're pretty much borrowing money from ourselves and transferring it to different accounts. Um, because they went too negative. The one thing I want to say to residents is I was one of those people that was seeing the massive water bills coming home to me. Um, I did have the town of Wellington come out and we were trying to figure out why I was seeing fourteen thousand, sixteen thousand gallons a month usage. If you guys have not checked your toilet flappers at home, I kid you not, I saved what? Six thousand, that's my rough guesstimate, a month of water, having two toilet flappers replaced in my home. Um, people don't realize how water consuming that is. Um, mine, I use Clorox tabs and some of the toilets don't take the plastic. It has to read chlorine acceptable or non-chlorine only, the flappers. My flapper was completely warped in a circle. Um, I was letting go thousands of gallons of water that we as residents have to pay for anyways. I had very large water bills. So please, there is ways that the town of Wellington is working with residents. Um, I don't feel that all of the high users are intentional high users. I think, um, making sure that you're monitoring your usage is a great thing. But I would suggest having that because I was one of those complainers about my water bill. It's still, my water bill went down with this rate issue. But I also did things to conserve such as zero escape my entire backyard. Not as expensive if you're as frugal as I am when it comes to zero escaping your backyard. Um, but the partnerships that I would like to see in the future, and I know that this is now actively being discussed, pursued. Um, I'd like a secondary water source. Some, a source that when interest rates are eight percent from North Pooter irrigation that we have additional options out there. I realize that interest rate came as a shock to you guys. Um, so it wasn't anything that most anybody was prepared for in the town this year and how it related to the negative in the funds. I am aware of that. Um, but not only having the new partnerships to possibly see decreases in costs of water. Yes, it'll be an upfront cost, but could we counter base that off of what we could sell or trade a few water shares for? So those are the kind of things that I would like to see. And not only that, but having an emergency backup water source is probably not the worst idea in the world, especially the way water is going now and how in demand it is and how unavailable it is, unless you sit like Megan, she said that she pays attention very well when water shares come up. Um, but other than that, I understand that, and Brian, I think you had come up with this number. If these rates don't increase, that the residents could very well be looking at a five hundred and was it five hundred or five hundred and fifty dollar water bill? Is that a possibility?
Yeah. So, yep, well, the, I think what I was referring to, what? Yeah, you, yes, correct. That was, that was in relation to building impact fees. If we were to not build any houses, uh, that's roughly two point one million dollars in impact fees, I believe. And if you do the math on that, right, spread over about thirty-five hundred taps, uh, that's somewhere around five hundred dollars a year, uh, that folks bills would increase if we did not.
For building, but not for raising rates. Perfect.
Yes, correct.
Which makes me feel a little bit better about my next statement. I am on board with trustee Gator and saying that if we can not figure out how to tighten the belt and decrease those funds, I would not vote to approve an increase in water rates right now. I would say, let's get extremely creative. We have, it's been said multiple times, we have great minds that sit with the town of Wellington. There's got to be something additional. So, and I would just love to have additional feedback on what that additional could or might be.
Can I maybe just speak real quickly about the North Pooter comment about the shares?
Yes.
So I completely agree that those shares are not usable for water without taking them to water court. However, North Pooter Irrigation Company is a shareholder company. So the more shares that we hold, the stronger position we have at the table to be able to negotiate that nineteen eighty-three agreement. So I would urge us to hold on to those shares at least until we have come to a conclusion on the negotiation of the nineteen eighty three agreement. Because we have a stronger position at the negotiation table, the more shares that we own. So I think it's a great idea. But we should wait until we have that nineteen eighty three discussion before we talk about selling those shares.
How long have we been trying to negotiate the contract with North Pooter Irrigation?
I I'd like to go ahead and leave this conversation for future.
Got it.
Did you have something?
Something that'll be helpful. And I think we can, my understanding is because of the way water is broken out, you've got the revenue that comes in, we can use. But then when money is brought in and used to purchase water shares, that's raw water money. I know that we're doing this year transfer. You're not really supposed to do that. So that money, you're not supposed to take money that's given for raw water. So even if we were to take those shares and sell them, technically, that money was given for shares and it's only to be used to purchase shares to provide water. It's not for ongoing expenses with that's our problem. Our problem is our plant, right? The loan on the plant. So that's an ongoing. So I know we're doing a loan right now where we're taking money out of the raw water fund to pay for operational things because we're just in that bad of a position. But that's not something I understand that we can normally do.
Just a couple of clarifications. I just want to just to clarify. So when we closed on the loan for the water plant expansion, which was before I I arrived. It was for a dollar amount and we were not even at sixty percent design at that point. There were a lot of things that took place. Many of you were on the board. We let had to let go a consultant. We came in with a new consultant. There was time delays. There's lots of things. Time is money, all of that. When we approved, when the board approved the contract for the water treatment plant expansion project. We knew at that point that the contract that was approved exceeded the loan that we had available to us. So that was that was several years ago now. And we knew at that point that in twenty twenty four, this is in prior, this is we could go back into packets previously. But in twenty twenty four, we would hit the the struggle of the struggle point for the fund. And that's and and even at that point, we knew that there would have to be some kind of. We would have to obtain some additional dollars, whether that was an interfund loan, an additional external loan, what have you. So none of those facts have changed over several years. So we're in we're we are exactly where we knew we were going to be in twenty twenty four. In like twenty twenty one. So we're exactly where we knew we're going to be. We have several opportunities for and and plans in place to be moving out of that. Part of that is responsible reactions to cost increases across the nation. And in our community, especially as we've had the some of the highest construction cost increases in the nation. All of our plants, both plants projects are on time, under budget currently. Move moving along swiftly, huge progress. I'm excited for those of you that can make it to the tour this Saturday. I will be there. Along with several staff members who are excited to show off. So I I just wanted to to review that. So we're we are exactly where we knew we were going to be in twenty twenty four. So that that interfund loan is not a surprise. To 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 any of us, right? Yeah, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Trustee Teets, did you have anything further before we went off to that? Or were you good? Okay, did you have anything further? Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Megan. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't feel great sitting up here and and doing this. But it's something that was planned for. We are on trend with the modeling of taking on the loan that we took. All these challenges that we are now facing were forecasted. We knew they were coming. We planned ahead so we could attack it better and not do crazy increases. There's municipality just south of here. To the best of my knowledge, they're increasing their water rates thirty percent this year, thirty percent next year and thirty percent the following year. That's almost a hundred percent and it's an actual large municipality. So it's catching up to a lot of folks in Colorado, the situation. We just ended up hitting our faces against the door first. And now we're here doing the best we can to mitigate that problem and get us out of the situation that was well before any of our time. And trying to do it in a responsible manner and set this town up for a future to where they can maintain water rates in a proper fashion. So nothing like this ever happens again. I'm in favor of this increase. It was planned for. We knew about it. It's no surprise if you've been paying attention to meetings. So that's all I have to say at this point. Are there any comments from the public on this item?
Jeff Schofield, seven three three five Kitfox Drive. So is the is the debt load? Are we experiencing an increase in costs because the loan rates are variable and that's impacting? Has changing suddenly and we weren't anticipating that rates could be above zero percent or much above that for a long time? Or is our issue the fact that? In a long term plan of thinking, budgeting, right, which is personally what we all have to do as well. We think about those long term costs and we don't spend even when times are good, right? Zero percent or eighteen percent, right? I've seen things in my lifetime change dramatically. You have a consistent plan regardless of is it booming, is it bust? Spending, right, and expenses have to be modeled to handle the bust times, not the boom times. So I don't know, right, from a budgeting perspective, exactly where things failed. But they clearly failed just in what you guys are describing, right? We are now bust, bad bust. You're trying to correct it. That is greatly appreciated and respected. But it failed there somewhere. We need to make sure that's not repeated from a spending perspective. That has to come way down. Revenues have to go way up. You've got to be operating in the black even in bust, right? And have a reserve that when things go bust, that can cover, right? The red and you still remain within the black. At a fundamental basis, right? That's how it always has to work. We've missed it. We're trying to recover, but we need to get back on track with that fundamental planning around the budgeting and the concept of that. And I appreciate the time to express that.
Thank you. All right, no more further. Oh, there we go. Should auction it off.
Again, Lisa Cholet, seventy four twenty four Homestretch Drive. I appreciate making that you guys are making the hard decision to raise the rates. I had some conversations individually with a couple of people. I didn't really remember the five percent increase that was built into that in our recommendation from the roundtable with reptiles. But I think this year, there are so many factors that came into play. I remember when I was on the sewer rate roundtable before the comprehensive study. When we were looking at a hundred permits a year and that was like, people were freaking out that we were only going to allow a hundred permits, right? At that time, we could have built five hundred houses if we wanted, except for we our infrastructure couldn't handle it, right? I don't think anyone envisioned all of the factors of a wet season. Massive, massive interest rate hikes and a huge increase in construction costs to all come to bear at the same time, right? And kind of to the previous conversation of different companies are approaching cost of living increases and things like that differently. And so there are companies who are going belly up and not because of that, but there's a lot of different things at play this year. That have made like those interfund transfers necessary. And that was something that with the previous board, we recommended as a roundtable to mitigate some of the increasing costs. And I fear that I think the last speaker, what he was saying was very valid. And I thought that we legitimately tried to do that in our work. But I think if we went for like, what's the worst case scenario, nine hundred factors? We'd be at the five hundred dollars a month right now, right? Because that wouldn't. We had to ask you guys to move a lot of money in a lot of different ways. And I noticed the admin fees back in there again. And it was my understanding before that that had kind of been moved out and suspended until things leveled out in general. But that's like five hundred thousand dollars or something. So there's a lot of factors in it. And so I just wanted to comment that there's so many different things that happen this year. And I hope people understand that everyone has done the best that they can with the information that they had at the time. None of us are fortune tellers, but the five percent is necessary. We this debt does not go away in a couple of years. Some people think that this is long term debt. It takes a long time to pay eighty million dollars in infrastructure. And I'm sure the construction cost was higher because construction costs, depending on what it is, hundred and thirty percent. I've seen even higher than that in some instances since that's my industry. But I just wanted to thank you guys for trying to find the best way to move forward and feel the pain of everybody else. So thanks.
All right, go on once, go on twice, public comment sold. Okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
So just looking at table, correct? Perfect. I move to table ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty three. And ordinance of the town of Wellington, Colorado, making adjustments to utility rates to our November twenty eighth regular meeting.
Second, and I have a comment.
Perfect. Final comments.
If you are struggling or experiencing hardship. The board has designated dollars through a fund, we call our hug grants hardship utility grant. If you are going through a hard time, contact the town rather than just not paying your bill. Contact them and let them know what you're going through. We have designated funds to help you. Okay, thank you.
Actually, I had a follow up question on that. I noticed that we very little expended out of the hug grant for this year. I don't know if we know the reason behind that.
We're not quite sure. We are making sure that it's being promoted.
Okay.
Our new our utility billing technician is actually watching some accounts and if someone. We recently had someone who hadn't paid in several months, which was unusual. So he reached out to this person, found out they were in the hospital.
Okay.
Hadn't been home, wasn't getting their mail. So we did utilize the grant funds to help that person at that time. So we're we're do we're doing an extra due diligence of trying to check those accounts, but also promoting it a little bit more. So thank you for asking.
All right, Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the item is tabled. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, will you please read?
Oh, what? Item E three.
Ordinance number eleven twenty twenty three in ordinance of the town of Wellington, Colorado, making adjustments to water and wastewater capital investment fees.
Perfect. Miss Megan Smith to present once again.
It's been a long time.
I know.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. Again, this is the essentially the follow up to the previous ordinance that was just tabled. I do appreciate the feedback and questions that we received this evening. And I did want to ask the opportunity just to clarify if there is any direct additional information. Or feedback you would like in advance of feeling comfortable in in voting on this approval at your next. Or excuse me, and voting on both of these ordinances at your next regular meeting.
I do have one. I I heard a lot of mentions of decreasing costs and I know there's a lot of active measures and and. Researching ways to decrease costs already. It sounded like as if that wasn't considered yet or being pursued, which I know it is actively in multiple directions. So I think maybe just a high level, you know, these are. Of of things that we can share. These are some of the things that we're considering or we have researched or are or are not possible or are possible. That we're continuing to pursue to decrease expenses. Because from the what I heard from the board, it sounds like we're doing nothing. And I know that there's multiple items that are actively being pursued right now, but not for sure. So we can't build into a budget.
Thank you.
I didn't hear that at all, but that's just me. I think you guys are doing multiple things and we have executive session right after this to discuss multiple things. So I am very well aware that you guys are actively pursuing different options. I think we had talked about Elko or something like that. So I know that there's there's options that have been, but. It would be awesome to see. To see where additional funding could be applied. So when we look at, and I I know this has been discussed before. So the ten percent from the general fund that transfers over to the enterprise fund. Is that ten percent of the projected revenue in the water fund that can be transferred? It's not ten percent of what we make in our general fund.
No.
It's only what we would be billing on that side or does it include capital? Okay, so it includes capital improvement too.
Yep.
So that's kind of. That just shot down that idea. So.
At least he swung at it.
Right? I just wanted to clarify before I completely just went off the wall and I got an odd look. No, I guess just exploring different options and alternatives and how we can. Even if it's five dollars to a senior citizen or a single mom being, I have been a single mom. It is a make and break for bread on the table or paying your water bill. And I know that to us, we go and buy a coffee for ten dollars and it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal to some, huh? Well, you.
That's a big deal for me.
Free along with it, they have those cinnamon rolls at Owl Canyon. So it minus typically ten if you add in the white rabbit and the cinnamon roll. But no, I would just, whatever we can do, I would love to look more into additional options. Where the funding could come from. So and I think I listed off many, some we can talk about, some we can't, but.
So you're looking for additional revenue funding sources?
Or if there is any additional options for any kind of interfund transfers that would make up for that cost.
Anybody else? Just to get.
I mean, I I shared my stuff earlier. I think that we need to look at reducing expenses, keeping to Cola versus merit. That will, if you want, you could bring back what salaries are actually tied to the water fund and what the impact would be on that if you want to bring that back. So you can actually see that number. That would be great.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Mr. Mason, you got anything? Mayor Pretend, you got anything? Think I think we're all set up there. Any comments from the public on this item? No, okay. Oh, yeah.
One option that's running through my mind that I just wanted to ask and maybe get hooked up to the right people if it's been considered and if there are any opportunities are. Are there any alternate options for irrigation water like the non potable? That we could create, you know, creative ideas like that, where we could offload that demand from the potable water, the town system. In such a way that, right? Creative ways, there might be a cost reduction structure. You know, I've thought about things like, well, do I build a cistern, right? And have water delivered for that. I've got to get a permit for that. What would the town think of that? But there's, you know, so I'm going to ask the question about those kind of creative ideas to offload some of that irrigation. Really water being used for irrigation where we're forced to consume presently from the potable, right, tap? And if there might be a less cost expensive way. And, you know, opportunities in the future. I don't know because of, you know, infrastructure and irrigation, but. A thought, you guys are talking about a lot of things and if you run across opportunities. We want to know as residents, you know, where we can. Do things better. And maybe, maybe the answer is not using the potable water for irrigation. Just an idea. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. No more public comment. Uh, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to table ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty-three in ordinance of the town of Wellington, Colorado, making adjustments to water and wastewater capital investment fees to our regular meeting November twenty-eight.
Second.
May I get a roll call, Mr. Clerk? Oh, you have a comment?
I did have a question that you could bring back because I, I was talking with the other one before. Um. I know at one point we had something that kind of laid out. I think this was under Mrs. Tippett's as a finance director. We had to be laid out like over the years where we would transition to more of the loan expense being paid by the capital investments. Fees as we were able to build more. I don't know if that's. If we have anything that goes through the diagrams that shows. The, because currently the cost of new plan is being split. More so on the resident side or existing users and a little bit on New Year's because we don't have a lot of building, but I know we had something that modeled what that looked like over a couple of years as we had more building come in. How that took over. If we have that, it'd be great to bring that back. If we don't have it anymore, that's fine, but that's something we had before that was helpful.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, may I roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the item is tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, will you please read? Item E four.
E four resolution forty-seven twenty twenty-three resolution authorizing financial support to ratepayers through general fund transfer to the water and wastewater enterprise funds.
And then Ms. Garcia, the town administrator, will present.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. Um, this resolution will memorialize the commitment of the Board of Trustees to support our residents and utility ratepayers. By providing a grant from the general fund to the water and wastewater enterprise funds. As it's been reported even tonight, the maximum legal amount that can be granted, that can be granted to the enterprise fund is ten percent of the actual enterprise revenues. For twenty twenty-three, it is estimated that the water fund will receive five hundred ninety-nine thousand from the. Five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars from the general fund and the wastewater fund will receive three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And in twenty twenty-four, the water fund is estimated to receive six hundred ninety-five thousand dollars from the general fund. And the wastewater fund will receive three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We've, the Board of Trustees has done this in the past and there was been no way to. Um, acknowledge what happened of the purpose, what the reason why it was done. So this is an opportunity for us to memorialize that. Um, the Board of Trustees can approve this and then there's a paper trail. So when we have new staff that comes on, things like that. They will recognize this is what was done and why it was done and when it was done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions, comments from the board? Start with. Mayor Pretend a call. Yeah.
Patty, nice work.
Trustee Teets.
Thank you for memorializing this. I know that there's been mention when we've brought things like this before. This board, many years, previous board where everyone thought it was discussed, but no one actually knew where it was. So I appreciate seeing something like this actually memorialized and it's there and listed. So if anyone has questions or tries to figure out what worked or what didn't work in the future. There is a paper trail that leads to it.
Thank you.
Trustee Gator.
I just, again, want to say this is really great. I can't tell you how many conversations I've had with Brad. I've only had a couple with Dan where it's like, I know we did this, but no one knows where or. How we did it or what it was. And especially as we're going into things where we're transferring money between funds, the, and I. I don't know if we have something, but if we do the interfund loan transfer. We need to make sure we do that too for that one. Or I don't know, between the raw water, I. These things need to be memorialized so that we don't get into a position where future boards are sitting there thinking things are in one way and then not realizing it was something else, right? We don't want to be like. Oh, we have all this great revenue and it's not actually revenue. So this is really, really good. And I think this, the. Question was brought up by one of the members of the public is, okay, how did you get here? And I think that was part of how we got here is people didn't really understand what was going on. And so I think this helps to bring clarity to this is exactly what's going on. So I think this is really important and helpful.
Thanks. Trustee Daly.
Uh, this board is always, um, encouraged to be more transparent and generally speaking, people think of that as of like. Catching us to bad things, but in this case it's catching us to good things. Um, for the last two years and following up in, in next year, depending on the outcome of this vote, um. Our board has decided to supplement the water and sewer fund in order to. Limit the, the impact on ratepayers. Um, and we've been making these decisions. And I, I, I'm, I'm aware that we've been doing it, but. We haven't, um, communicated in a way to let people know that we're. Attacking it from multiple directions. So I really appreciate doing this in a resolution because. The whole purpose of these transfers at the maximum legal. Allowance. Is to make sure that we can, our increase to ratepayers is as small as we possibly can do. So, um. And it kills me because, you know, I get all the attacks of. You know. Why are you making me pay more? And in my mind, I know we're. We're trying to supplement it in as many places as possible. So. In this case, it's transparent. So you can see what we're doing to help. So, um, I do really, really appreciate that. And I think it's a great, uh, example of better communication and and support to the board. So thank you so much for doing this.
Thanks. Uh, trustee Mason.
No questions. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, yeah, I forgot. Yeah. Uh, any comments from the public on this agenda item? Going once, going twice. So, okay, no, no. Do I hear a motion on this agenda item?
I move to approve resolution number forty-seven twenty twenty-three as proposed.
I'll second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Just Daly. Excuse me. Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and resolution forty-seven twenty twenty-three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title of E five?
Contract for outside counsel.
Mr. Sapienza, will you please present?
I want to share the love for lawyers just a little bit. Um. This item, uh, the, the town's been approached by, uh, Comcast cable as well as other telecommunications providers regarding potentially entering into a franchise agreement. Uh, there's also potentially discussion of, uh, other utility licenses in the town. The town currently has two or one telecommunications franchise agreement that's been codified at chapter six of the Wellington Municipal Code. That was done about twenty some odd years ago. It may or may not be expired. It certainly renews automatically. Uh, these are incredibly complex agreements. Uh, a telecommunications franchise involves state and federal law. Um, just our own includes customer service requirements, um, provision of services to municipal facilities. Franchise fees, which in our code, there's like a seven or eight step process for figuring out how that's determined. Um, I found an odd item in our code about bank at home channels, uh, where it's like. These things are really about. You need to know the industry. You need to know where the industry is. You need where over the industry is going. You know how the industry is regulated. Uh, we've talked to other municipalities in the area and I've talked to some of the other attorneys at the CML conference about who they might recommend. Um, for a, a outside counsel that specializes in utilities and franchise agreements for municipalities. Um, Severance just recently entered into a franchise agreement with Comcast cable. They used Kissinger and Feldman PC, attorney there named Brandon Ditman. We've talked, Patty and I have talked to Brandon. Um, his rate is two twenty-five an hour. He, he says for negotiating a franchise agreement, um, he, no more than about five thousand dollars total. Want to make sure this was a cost effective thing. Um, at five thousand dollars, it really, the town stands to benefit hugely. Uh, greatly from a properly negotiated agreement. There's a lot of pitfalls here. So i- it's something that. It's time to hire a specialist for this. Um, and we'd like to engage this attorney to work on telecommunications. Franchise agreements for the town and potentially in the future utility licensing. Outside counsel may have been approved by the board trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Sapienza. Questions from the board, starting with trustee Teets.
So I think my question one is, is how will this financially benefit? Our residents? Um, we hear a lot about internet services provide providers, the limited availability of internet services providers. Um, I want to make sure that going through these talks and negotiations, it does not set up anything where you have to be a sole. Provider in a town. This just increases options for people to come in, but does not monopolize the utility company.
The current franchise agreement that's in chapter five has a whole section that's titled something like non exclusive, non exclusivity.
Perfect.
Certainly as the town moves forward, um, it wouldn't be our intent to have a, to create a monopoly on telecommunications. It's about increasing options. Your first question is about how this financially benefits residents and we can also look at just the general fund. It, it, when you look at the general fund in our, um, annual budget, especially over time, you see a lot of the revenue that comes in. Goes. Up into the right, you know, as time progresses, the, as the town grows, it increases. There is a franchise fee. Revenue line item that you'll see in all of those charts and it's basically been flat. For the last decade. Um, franchise fees are a fee that the town receives for, from a telecommunications provider or other utility user. Um, for the benefit of using the town's rights of way. So as they put in cable lines or, uh, um. Uh. Optical lines, fiber, fiber lines. The town receives in the current telecommunications agreement, five percent of all gross revenue. So as. If Comcast were to come in or another, as their sales in the town increase, the town receives a portion of that. That's, that's one way that the town would benefit. Another potential way is provision of services directly to the town. In a lot of these sorts of agreements, when a, a new provider comes in that provides fiber services in a town that doesn't currently have it. The town benefits by the, the, the provision of those services. As part of that agreement. And so as, if we're negotiating with Comcast in particular about fiber. There's water plant that's. Up a little out of the way that needs a, a, a regular telecommunications line to it. We have municipal service building and then there's schools. And so that's actually a savings. It would reduce the expenses while simultaneously increasing revenue. So. And then for people's pocketbooks, and again, not looking, it wouldn't be in our intent to look at creating a monopoly, so creating more options and, um, competition in the market for telecommunications services.
Got it. Now, is there a way to know exactly what you're looking at before or? So it says multiple. So there's multiple older franchise agreements. So.
We currently have two. Oh. Codified in our code.
Okay, so I, I apologize then. So, no, because I thought we had. Hmm, multiple meaning many, and I wanted to know exactly at two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, how many are we discussing?
The intent here is, this is, we're, we're not looking for, uh, the permission from the board right now to hire him for. Twenty agreements. We, we've got a couple of very particular. Items that we'd like to hire an outside counsel to negotiate. So really, right now, it's. One potential agreement that I think we want to focus on. That's about five thousand dollars.
Got it. No more questions?
Thank you. Trustee Gator.
Yeah, so I guess the question I have right now is, so how is it operating with our current? Internet providers that they, uh, do we have a franchise agreement with them or? Like, so I'm trying to understand like why we need one now, but we don't have one.
We do. We do. And it's codified in chapter five. There is a franchise agreement with current telecommunications provider that's, that's actually in Wellington Town Code.
Okay.
It's, it's an odd thing that they would put franchise agreements in code, but if you go to chapter five, it's a, it's a contract between the town of Wellington and the telecommunications. Yeah, so that's, we currently have one. Um, they, it, it has no ending date. It has an automatic renewal. Um, I think it, that one probably should be renegotiated. Um, we should really, we might want to readdress that, but I think that's something for a. Telecommunications specialist to really about.
So that currently governs all of our internet providers fall under that?
Okay.
Or? That's, I, I.
I, I honestly, I, I don't know. Um, how many enterprise their providers are in the town of Wellington?
Two that I'm aware of.
I know of one franchise agreement.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so that's the part I'm trying to understand is I'm like, okay, so if we already have people operating without one.
That's why we should hire outside counsel to really evaluate what we need. And that's, as I think there's been a gap in this, in this particular area. And this is why I think. Getting somebody who specializes in this to really address what the town needs, what the town could gain from, that's, that's what we're trying to fix here.
Okay. And then I know. Should be about five thousand dollars. Yeah. What happens if, because I mean, it's not like we're going to get to the five thousand dollar market and say, well, so much for the agreement and walk away. Um. How do we keep it from becoming seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand dollars?
We can talk to, I, I mean, I can talk to him. I mean, I, I, I understand the, the board's position here. Um, but it would be really. Difficult to come back to the board for a, to. If it hits five thousand and we are almost done and having to come back to the board for an increase of. Four hundred dollars just to finish the deal seems would. Be impractical. And, um, and that's usually a, a engagement with attorneys or, you know, and other professionals like this is, it's an hourly basis. He's, he's a professional. He's going to do. His, his diligent work. Really, the benefit here is hiring somebody who knows what they're doing and has engaged with these companies on a regular basis. I, I think you'll be able to do it cheaper than just about anybody else.
Yeah. Um, and then. I know his rate is the two twenty-five or two fifty. Everyone else's rates are all over the board. Are there situations or who makes a determination whether, you know, the top partner that's four fifty an hour? Starts working on something. Do they make that call? Do we make that call? Are we only saying we're going to pay for him?
In, in partnership with the, with the law firm here. Um, we're, we're working with Brandon.
Okay.
At this firm. Um, he's the, he's the attorney that we are engaging. We are engaging the firm. If he needs help from the top guy for something. Um. That's kind of his, he'll, he'll make that call, but he'll, he'll ask us first.
Okay.
Make sure of that. Um, but we are, we, our primary attorney on this is Brandon Ditman. That's who we're working with. Um, and he in particular, not necessarily the firm broadly, he in particular is who has been. Um, referred to us by a member of these fellows. Um, we'll, 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 we'll do our best to keep the cost down. I, I think this is actually a cost, like I say, I think long term, this is really a cost saver.
Could we do a not to exceed of like sixty-five hundred dollars? So it's. It's well above, we think it's going to be five thousand. So we say, okay, you got fifteen, because I mean, I'm, that's. Quite a few hours. You're going to know pretty early on if you're going to be at sixty-five hundred dollars and then just. Can we do that or does that cause a problem?
If, if you'd like to, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's certainly in your property and, and, and I'll translate on, uh, I'll, you know, I'll convey that to him. I have clients all the time who. Give me some sort of cap and we'll talk about it long before we reach that.
Sure.
Um, I, I, I. The only reason I hesitate is I, I would hate to get to the situation where. Right there. And then I have to come back to the board and ask for an increase.
And that's why I'm saying, you know, we're being told that this should be about five thousand dollars. So I'm thinking, I'm budgeting. So I'm thinking that's five thousand dollars is going to be budgeted for this lawyer that can't go to whatever else we want to do. So I'm saying, okay. Fifteen hundred dollars is not quite half, but that's almost half of, again. That's pretty far over what we're told we're budgeting for. So I think at that point, it's reasonable to come back and say, hey, here's where we're at. We need more. And if, okay. That, that would be my preference.
And, and that could just be worked into the motion and, and I'd be happy to, to convey that. That is workable.
Okay.
I have.
Donna was.
Perfect.
One question really quick. I apologize. Um, related to. Trying to figure out how to. They just come back to me unless someone else has a, trying to figure out how to.
Okay.
Ask that question.
Trustee David.
Uh, at some point, we have to have fiber connectivity to all of our facilities and, uh, to major connectors. In, in general, we've been talking about this at a county level for a very long time. Um, so. Either a private company will have to do this, or at some point we would have to do this. This would be. It, it's the future, right? Internet is the future. Um, connectivity is the future. Uh, we have very specific needs for fiber right now that already included in budget for twenty twenty-four. So. Um. If we have an agreement in place that's well negotiated, these are items that will come through this franchise agreement. And anybody that does subscribe. And has the choice to subscribe, doesn't have to use this provider, but has a choice to subscribe, their money. Is then investing into the infrastructure that's servicing. that's servicing the entire town of Wellington. Um, so we're benefiting from that too. And those dollars are then turning around and being poured right back into our town. Um, but that's not going to happen. They're not going to go out of their way to build app, extra infrastructure to support the town of Wellington if they don't have to. So this is essential to make sure that we have a good agreement. I want to make sure that's done by professionals in, in this industry and in this field to make sure we're getting the best and most that we can. And then following this, I think that we should definitely pursue, pursue renegotiations on any other existing franchise agreements that we have. And maybe have a model or template moving forward that we, every single time we're approached for any opportunity like this, that we're meeting our basic, most minimum requirements for any of those negotiations going forward. So I think this five thousand dollars is not just for this purpose of this agreement, but it's setting us up to understand better and negotiate better in the future and have all of our agreements in the future to be better. So it's essential in my mind, uh, is money well spent. And, um, regarding a cap, I'm totally in agreement of that too. But I, I do think that if it needs to go above and beyond that, maybe we should indicate that it can be, um, an approval. I don't know, within po- uh, uh, purchasing policy, whatever the case might be. So it doesn't necessarily has to go, come back to us, but that we're automatically notified and aware of exactly what's going on. So I, I don't know how you want to handle that. But I, I know that this needs to happen for sure. And that we're going to spend less money per hour doing, using someone who knows exactly what they're doing with the exact companies we're dealing with, um, versus any other routes. So I, I'm definitely want to improve this and make sure that we spend the money that's necessary to reinvest in Wellington and save money in the future. So.
Before you go, I'm just going to inject a little bit. Um, I mean, I think one thing, I mean, just brought to my mind. But yeah, renegotiating franchise agreements, this is a, a huge way that we can start increasing revenues in areas that we've been missing out on. And so the cost to get this done is far less than what we'll actually gain from it. And so I just want to make it aware that this is a revenue stream and it's a, we can do this across a lot of different things, just not, not just telecommunications. Um, we do with like Black Hills Energy, all, all soldiers, all sorts of stuff, right? Um, so great possibilities. Uh, trustee Mason, go ahead.
Uh, no questions. I, and I'm not going to bother to repeat what everybody else has set up here. I do all, all, all good stuff. And I certainly support the idea of a cap, uh, trustee Gator, if we want to do that. So, uh, thank you, Dan. Appreciate it.
You remember?
Well, I remember I'm just trying, like I said, to figure out a way. So our professional ser- services, our line item in our budget. Does this not already allocate for those kinds of items without having to?
Hiring attorneys and representation for the town has to come to the board. That's primarily why we're here. Um, the, the budget.
It's not about, uh, money.
Budget item. This really is about, um, engaging, representation has to be done by the board.
Got it. And there's money in the line item for this.
There's legal representation. We take it out of a couple of different pockets, really. But that's why we're here.
Just out of curiosity, what is the purchase policy threshold for the town manager, our administrator?
Thirty thousand dollars. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm good with that. I mean, I highly doubt that we're going to go that high. I think.
I mean, we'll make more than that over the next, you know, ten, fifteen years.
Right. I mean, we have this professional staff. I completely trust.
And my, my, I, like, I, I, I love, I love the, the cap. I think we should make it to where we're just notified though, because I don't, my, my only fear there is if it has to come back and it puts things off for things to get done, then all of a sudden our water plant can't go online or something along those lines. I don't want that to happen.
Is our water plant dependent on Comcast? Is that part of our contract?
No, but we are desperately.
Okay, okay. Yeah. So let me, that sounded very dystopian. Um, let me put it this way. Um, to be able to make sure that we have constant steady internet there and it won't cause the machines to go down. And I don't want to put any delays to that.
So what I'm going to recommend is let's do a seventy-five hundred dot to exceed. That's one and a half times what we're being told it will cost. That way you said the older agreement, maybe we should look at that too. Look at that. And maybe we say at six thousand, come back and talk to us. And maybe it's just a conversation. We give you the go ahead to keep going forward. I, I think that would be beneficial because if he's like, hey, we're making great progress on this and we've got time to go on the other one. Maybe we say, go for it. Take ten thousand dollars. But I, I would like it to come back to us because I mean, the agreements are going to come back.
Two birds, one stone. Digging it.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm good with that. And I've got a motion once we get to that point. So.
My preference, of course, is I, I think it's with a, I'll purchase a lot. That's perfectly workable. I, 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 I have.
Yep.
Yes. If, if you'd like a, a hard cap on there, um, I can, we, we can work with that.
Perfect. Okay. Any comments?
Keep it well below that as well.
And possibly figure out if you should be having franchise agreements with ones that are.
Possibly figuring out if we should have franchise agreements with the ones that are already operating here.
Yeah, or update them. Yeah, for sure. Um, okay. Thank you. Uh, comments from the public on this item? Crickets. Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve contract for outside counsel with a cap of seventy-five hundred and, uh, report back to the board of trustees if we hit six thousand.
A second.
Sir Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the contract for outside counsel motion is approved with the stated stipulations.
Thank you. All right. Onto reports. Any reports from our lovely town attorney?
Uh, none at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any reports from town administrator?
Just a reminder of the water treatment plants, um, tours the Saturday, November sixteenth, starting at ten AM. The information is on your calendars. Thank you.
Thank you. Super excited for that. Staff communications are in the packet. Are there any questions on these items from the board?
I do want to go through financial stuff, but I was thinking maybe if Dawn, because he's presenting to the finance committee Monday and he'll have the better reports, maybe he can join us at four. And we could talk about it then, because I, I want to get into our other stuff we got tonight. So I don't want to take up time, but if we could, I, I do want to go through stuff in.
And four.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, everybody just think of Sergeant Sherry. He wasn't here to, you want to present tonight? So just pray for him. That's all I got there. Uh, are there any board reports? Start with Mayor Pretend.
Yes. Uh, it was quite an honor to be able to attend the Laramore County Emergency Preparedness Meeting with staff and other, um, stakeholders in the community about planning for emergency and catastrophic, catastrophic events that could happen. It was very, um, enlightening and educational. It doesn't matter how much money we have in reserves. At the end of the day, we're never going to have enough. And we certainly don't want to end up like lions and be caught with our pants down in a really bad situation. So you don't really think about emergency planning until you're in a situation and you're in it. Um, so I am very impressed with the efforts that staff has made to be, uh, proactive instead of reactive to those situations. So it was, um, I look forward to seeing what comes out of that for future planning. And thank you to staff for inviting me for the opportunity to participate in that. Um, and then the, uh, sorry, the commissioner meeting was, it was great. Um, it was a little disheartening to see that there's dwindling participation from citizens and that, but, um, it was encouraging to hear that they're trying to come up with some creative solutions for addressing that interception. So look forward to seeing what comes out of that.
Trusty Teets?
It's nine fifty-six. I'll wait till next time.
Okay, perfect. Trusty Gator.
Oh, I want to get us on or get us into our other things sometimes. So never.
Thank you.
Uh, I was able to attend, uh, the Veterans Day events, um, and happy Veterans Day. I, oh, I saw you. Um, happy Veterans Day, of course, to all those who have served and thank you for your service. Um, I, I did get to attend the events, um, with our, uh, community and business liaison who was there. Um, as always, the events and the support for the community are lovely. Um, it was a wonderful experience with the flyover, even if you weren't at the event, I'm sure you heard it or saw that at least. Um, but that, those items were consolidated across so many different groups and community members to put on such a meaningful event with many locations and participation. Um, so it was, it was beautiful. Um, and our Centennial Park is gorgeous, of course, with the cannon. That's where some of the activities took place. So, um, as always, wonderful job on events and, and thank you for the town staff who were involved in that. And of course, all the nonprofits that participated too, including the American Legion. Um, and then otherwise on Friday night, Wellington Middle High School Fall Fest two thousand twenty-three. As far as I know, is the first, maybe there's, there was other Fall Fest, I don't know. But there's a mac and cheese cook-off. Um, and it's otherwise a fundraiser for the school. Lots of fun activities. You can see, um, the school and talk to staff and just be part of the community and everything that it is, um, to be part of Wellington Middle High School. So please ten, five to seven thirty at Wellington Middle High School Commons in the Eastern Courtyard. Lots of activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Mason.
Um, I've got the Laramore County Opioid Abatement Council tomorrow, so I do not have anything to report at this time.
I have nothing to report.
Um, uh, mayor, point of order, we're at nine fifty-eight. I'd like to move in a technical, you can only do fifteen minutes, but we're going to be in executive session. So I'd like to move to extend our meeting to fifteen minute increments to ten thirty.
Yeah.
Second.
All, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and yeah, and once we're in executive session, there's no extensions. Um, perfect. Okay. Uh, next we will proceed to the executive sessions for this evening. Members of the public will be asked to leave the building during the duration of these executive sessions. Members attending via Zoom are hereby notified that the Zoom meeting will be discontinued for the duration of these executive sessions. Uh, will the clerk please read the title of the items, G one through G three? G one conferences with an attorney for. Oh, okay. Do G one.
Okay. So if, if that, I'm not going to be here for the two minutes of Stephanie.
We'll, we'll read it.
Conferences with, uh, item G one conferences with an attorney for the town pursuant to CRS twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice relative to pending litigation related to the appeal of a site plan approval. Their executive session will not be recorded and an attorney certification will be provided as required by CRS twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, two, D five, two B. The discussions in the executive session constitute privileged attorney-client communications.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.